What's up?
It's like this. Say, oh, you're in, you're in GQ.
So if, if just a chair, if you don't mind, if I can do a little introduction on, on the technology piece of this meeting before we get going. Just, just a reminder for everyone. If your item is not up that you're interested in for this agenda, please have yourself muted. That way we could respect the, the sort of the conversation and the discussion regarding that specific item. So you can unmute yourself via the participant's screen on the right-hand side of, of the Zoom screen by looking for your name as well as hitting mute. Also, those of you who are not identified in the participations section of, of the screen by virtue of a phone number, please change your names. That way we can recognize you. That would be very helpful. Again, you can also mute yourself by hovering your mouse over your photograph on the screen and clicking on the mute button. That would just help make this meeting go a lot smoother without any interruptions. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, Director Cervantes. And with that, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the San Marino Planning Commission hearing of October 28th. And I'm going to just give a brief, some brief remarks on the procedures that we're going to follow. At this point, we're going to defer the flag salute since we are meeting virtually and we don't have a unified flag for us to all represent. Can we have a roll call of the commissioners?
Yes. Commissioner Brody?
Present.
Commissioner Chang?
Present.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Alternate member Okazaki? Alternate member Ross? Okay, Vice Chair Boyle?
Here.
Chair Wright? Sorry, sorry, Chair Dustin. Well.
Here. It's gonna take me a few meetings to get used to it.
It's only been one meeting, sorry.
I'll have it.
So it looks like we're still waiting for the alternates. I think we'll go ahead and get started and hopefully one of them will join us before too long. So we do post the agenda for this meeting 72 hours in advance. It is posted at San Marino City Hall, at the San Marino Public Library, at the San Marino Recreation Department, and on the city's website. Each commissioner who is voting on the items tonight will have visited each site in question and reviewed the item on the agenda and the materials presented. The general order for hearing each case will be as follows. First, staff will discuss the case and provide background information and a recommendation to the commission. I will then ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on their proposal. The hearing will then be open to the public for comment, and I will ask for comments for, against, or about the project. I'm going to ask everyone to please hold your comments to three minutes. If you are practiced in your comments, you should be able to say everything that you need to say in three minutes. If someone has spoken prior to you and has already expressed feelings that you have, it's not necessary to restate all those feelings. You can simply say you agree with the previous speaker. In that case, and when you do speak, I would ask that you provide your name and your address. And again, going back to what Director Cervantes had mentioned, I'm going to be reluctant to allow people who have not identified themselves on the roll to speak. If you're just identified by a phone number or a code name, please change that to your name. And when you're, when you are speaking, then state your name again and your address. At the conclusion of public comments, we will close the public hearing and then we will have discussion amongst the commissioners. Most of these cases will involve variances, conditional use permits, and/or design review considerations. In each case, variances will be considered first, then conditional use permits, and then finally, design review considerations. If there is no motion for approval or denial, the planning commission has an option to continue the application for a future meeting. In the event of a continuance or a denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during our deliberations on the commission. That will be useful in resubmitting the application. It is important for property owners to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the original approved design or paying a fine to the city of San Marino equal to the greater of 5% of the project valuation or $2,500, and then resubmitting those changes to the commission for approval. It is also important to understand there's a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken, and the applicant or any interested party can request to appeal the case to the city council for review and action. We will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, we may break that if there are a large number of people here for a particular item that's late in the agenda. And we will not take, we will not start discussion on a new item after 11 o'clock. Let's hope that's not an issue tonight. So with that, let us start with agenda item number one. This is a review of conditional use permits and design review consideration at 2404 Mission Street. Then if we could have the agenda report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, the applicant for 2404 Mission Street is proposing to construct a new two-story mixed-use project that consists of the following use breakdown. A 546-square-foot commercial unit, a 638-square-foot one-bedroom residential unit on the first floor, and a 5,934-square-foot four-bedroom residential unit that's located in a combination over the first floor and the second floor. Altogether, the proposed structure will be 7,118 square feet. The existing conditions include a single-story house and garage located on a commercially zoned property. As part of this project proposal, this house will be demolished. The request requires a conditional use permit for the new commercial building, a conditional use permit for the residential use, and design review for the new building. Altogether, this project requires three actions. Supporting documentation includes a traffic assessment, a historic assessment of the existing house, and a recorded easement located on the western portion of the property. The historic assessment performed by Staffels Environmental concluded that the existing house did not meet the criteria for eligibility under national, state, local requirements. The traffic assessment found that the project did not result in added vehicle trips that would be detrimental to the neighborhood and Mission Street. The easement on the property is located on the western area of the property and acts as a driveway approach. Such an easement is provided so that the property directly rear of the subject site is provided with ingress and egress or driveway access. The easement is also used for utility access as well. This application has been filed under the California Housing and Accountability Act at SB 330. Under the state mandate, the HAA limits the city's ability to deny a housing project that complies with applicable objective general plan and zoning standards unless the city finds that the development project will cause a specific adverse impact upon the public health and safety. This HHA mandate also limits the city from imposing conditions that reduce or lower the density of the project. In this case, density is referring to residential uses and size. Lastly, under Senate Bill 330, the city may only conduct no more than five public hearings on this item at tonight's meeting that does reduce it down to four. That being said, staff took the approach of evaluating this project no different than any other development project, and that's by using the city's findings under design review and the findings under the conditional use permit requirements. In addition, staff references the general plan in the evaluation process. With respect to the general plan, the proposed project is not in line with the objectives and policies of the city and general plan with respect to economic development. Mission Street is a small boutique-type commercial area that is intended to serve the nearby neighborhoods. The nature and development of Mission Street is neighborhood commercial. The proposed project aims to merely develop 546 square feet towards commercial use or activity, which represents 7%, 7% of the overall size of the building. That means that 93% of the proposed project is catered to residential uses. In staff's recommendation, the applicant is charged with submitting a new project that balances the commercial use with that of residential. Specifically, the commercial use of the building should be enlarged to 2,400 square feet, and the residential use should be reduced by no less than what the state statute requires. Despite receiving objections of this modification from the applicants, it is arguable that the HHA does not prevent the city from increasing the size of the commercial square footage and correspondingly reducing the size of the residential units, provided that at least 2/3 of the total square footage is devoted to residential purposes. As stated earlier, this project must be evaluated pursuant to objective standards, which are height requirements, step-up requirements, and density requirements and others. This project does satisfy the development standards imposed by this commercial zone. Of course, the prerequisite is the requirement for a CUP and design review. Was okay. Give me a second. Let me just mute. Okay. So, so that being said, staff could not meet the findings for the conditional use permit as currently designed. Under the staff report, staff references general plan inconsistencies, dangerous precedent setting with respect to this type of development, property, sorry, parking impacts, and inconsistencies with the development pattern of the commercial area. The design review findings could also not be satisfied in staff's assessment of this project. The massing, scale, and location of the proposed new structure makes this project incompatible with the developed commercial buildings in the area. Equally as important, the proposed project will result in privacy impacts for the nearby home located directly to the east. Despite, despite the project's inability of meeting general plan objectives, meeting the design review findings and the CUP findings, it is clear that state's housing legislation is imposing much higher standards than the city can enforce. In addition, SB 330 only permits up to five meetings, which, as I mentioned, after tonight, reduces that down to four. So to best juggle these opposing laws, it is staff's recommendation to approve the project, but with conditions that will mitigate any further damage from this project. Such conditions can be found as attachment three of this project. And so that being said, I open up for questions of the planning commission.
Question? Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Can you remind us of the background of this, Director Cervantes? This was a case that came to the commission originally as a single-family dwelling, correct?
That's correct. And in 2019, just a year ago, the applicant submitted to the planning commission a request to demolish the existing house and to construct a new two-story home with a garage. That project went through several iterations through the planning commission in terms of modifications. There was a large setback adjustment to the front of, of the property, amongst other changes. That project was approved narrowly by the planning commission. It wasn't a unanimous decision. Subsequent to the decision of the planning commission, it was appealed to the city council, where the project was ultimately rejected as well. There was some discussion at the council meeting to the applicant, or at least directing to the applicant to return with a much, much smaller-sized project to alleviate some of the massing and scale issues at that time. Of course, that direction was not taken, and what we received was this application for this project.
Okay, yeah, and I think, as I recall, I was in the minority. I think you might have been also chair. I think we were the only two of this current commission that were at the meeting when we invited that. Okay, so the other question I have is, I'm very confused about this project in the sense of the residential units. And you've got a residential unit on the bottom, you've got a residential unit on the top. They have different entrances, and, and for me, that's an apartment building. That looks like a two-story apartment building. Now, I'm pretty confident San Marino Residential is zoned 100% R1, correct?
That's correct.
There's no R2 zone, there's no R3 zone, there's no R4. There's no multifamily.
Correct.
Okay, so, so I'm kind of confused about how it complies with our zoning to, to begin with, frankly. Another question I have is notice. We were receiving some, some letters this afternoon, and some people were complaining that they hadn't heard of this. Please, also for the record, just remind us of the notice that's required.
Yes, so that's a great point, Commissioner. We, we did satisfy the noticing provisions that are, that are pursuant to the code, and that is, number one, a prerequisite of the applicant to reach out to the neighbors that are within the legal neighborhood. And that's, you know, maybe about 12 residential properties. They, as I noted in the staff report and also in record and filed, three of the nearby residences did approve the project or did not object to the project. One of those is their property directly to the rear of the site. The other members of the public that were in the legal neighborhood were not reachable, although two attempts were made to reach those property owners. In addition to that prerequisite of, of visiting the neighbors, we did send out a, a letter, notice of this project to a 300-foot radius of, of this property in which 69 properties received such notice. And that's also on record. We also do certify the mailer pursuant to city clerk's review of, of the, of the mailing process. Prior to the mailer going out, there was a notice published in the, the San Marino Tribune, and those are all standard practices, also backed up by code as far as the notification requirements.
Right, oh, well, 69 in that one. I didn't realize it was that large. And final question. Thank you, Chair, for indulging me. My final question is about the easement, the reduction of the easement from 14 feet to 12. Can you say why they did that?
Yeah, the facts of, and that's another great point to bring up, the facts of the matter with respect to the easement was that during our, our initial, staff's initial review of the application, we had identified pursuant to code the inability of an easement to be used as part of the lot size of a property. And of course, the lot size of the property dictates the number of residential units you can propose on a commercial zone, which is a density of one unit per 5,000 square feet of land area. And so we had found that with, with having to, by code, the necessity to exclude that square footage, which is the easement, found that the property was only eligible for one residential unit. And so based off the response of the applicant, they approached the county to reduce the size of the easement from 14 feet to 12 feet, allowing them an additional amount of square footage to get to two residential units or to get to a lot size that would permit for two residential units.
Thank you, and that still complied with the driveway standards, the 12 feet?
Correct.
Thank you. I'm done.
I'd like to just make a note that alternate Commissioner Okazaki has joined the meeting, and I'll just ask, do any of the other commissioners have questions for city staff? Please, Commissioner Boyle, or Vice Chair Boyle?
Thank you, and I didn't have any questions, but this came up in something that Director Cervantes said. You had made a comment that there were three, there were three neighborhood approvals for this project, and you specifically pointed out the one directly to the rear, which I believe is the homeowner's parents. And the only reason I bring that up is because, do we have, is there? I don't really know exactly what I'm asking, but when there seems to be like a vested interest in one of the neighbors to approve for potentially their advantage, is that weighted? Is that weighted, can it be weighted differently than other neighborhood approvals? Do?
Yeah, I, I, I get the, I understand what you're, you're, you're getting at on that, Vice Chair. And, and there really isn't anything in the code that would prevent, you know, you know, individuals with, with interest to the project and not being part of that neighborhood or legal neighborhood process. The code merely identifies by definition what the legal neighborhood is, and, and by virtue of identifying specifically how many properties you are to go and, and sort of reach out to. And so that's really all of the code requires. And being, being that this property to the rear is within the legal neighborhood, they were merely just required to obtain some, some level of contact with that person. Now, whether there's interest in the project by virtue of being related, the code is really silent on that.
Okay, thank you for explaining that and for, I mean, for any future things that might come up. That's, I appreciate that explanation.
I, I have a, I have a question. Although, is there, is there a requirement, or should there be a requirement that maybe 50% of the people contacted should be responding before we could take an action? I mean, it just seems like we're not getting enough people participating in this inquiry as to what they think the project, you know, what, what you think about the project. In as much as majority of the people did not respond, and I, I don't know if there was any good effort as a follow-up, it, it disturbs me that we only have just three people, and like Shelley said, that one is a relative, and that, and, and there's only two people in support or approval, and most of the people are silent. And I just, like happened in my neighbors, they did not follow up, and I actually bugged them for a project that they had, and I, I think there should be a more of an effort to get more people to, to, to respond, and that maybe we should have a requirement that at least 50% plus one should respond.
Yeah, and, yeah, and those are also great points, and I've always been uncomfortable with the process because from what I have seen in other projects is, is exactly what's going on here, not to really pick on this project, but it's pretty consistent theme here in that a lot of the residents, even though there's documentation of two attempts, you get a majority of the folks unresponsive. And with a very few minority who have responded, whether it's opposing or supporting a project. We will be discussing this exact issue at the next planning commission meeting. If you recall, with your joint meeting with the city council, there was direction to have this before the, the planning commission to discuss notification procedures to really come up with a better game plan as to what's in place. I have some ideas that I'm ready to share with the planning commission at that meeting, and so at that point, we will have a full-on discussion as to how to move forward with this.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, I have just a couple. The first one is, I noticed that the commercial unit on this proposal has no restroom facilities. Is that permissible?
The, the, the building code will mandate whether a restroom facility is required. We are not at that point at this moment. If, if this project were to move forward to the plan check process, which is a plan check involving consistency with the California building codes and plumbing codes and as well as electrical codes, if it's a mandate pursuant to the California building codes, they will be required to supply that restroom facility. And being it that this project had, has moved past the planning commission, hypothetically speaking, they would not be able to enlarge the building to put in that, that extra bathroom. They would have to remodel the interior space to make room for that restroom facility.
Okay. And then my last question is, you, you stated a reference to Appendix 3, which has some conditions that staff is suggesting be included in any approval that might be granted. Are you saying then that these conditions that staff has outlined would satisfy the findings for the conditional use permit and the design review considerations?
As I, as I stated in, in the closing of my presentation, these conditions will help mitigate some of those impacts. I'm not entirely convinced at this point with what I've seen so far on this project that we can completely mitigate some of these impacts. The, the inconsistencies with the general plan, of course, this project is not designed to be consistent with the general plan currently. The hope is the modifications will lead to that, to, to a consistent project with our general plan. Because I'm not physically seeing a plan that demonstrates to me today that, that they would be satisfying these conditions, I can't really fully answer the question. But as designed, I cannot meet, I cannot see that this project satisfies general plan objectives and policies, CUP findings, as well as design review findings. The conditions will certainly help get us to, to that point, but to be specific, one of the conditions is requesting the enlargement of the commercial use of the project. And as you all are aware, when you have a specific-sized commercial use, that mandates a specific amount of parking requirements or parking spaces. I have done the math for the size of the backyard or rear yard area, and based off what I've calculated, you can get about 12 parking spaces in that rear yard and also accommodate for driveway approaches.
Okay, thank you, that, that helps, actually.
President Dustin, I have a, I had a question related to parking. So, so the, the house, that, this project did not seem to have an enclosed garage. Is that, is that allowable?
Well, the code for, well, I will say this, in terms of the commercial, that this, this property is in a commercial zone.
Right.
Under the commercial ordinance, uses that are not specified, or actually, I'll correct myself. In the parking requirements, and what we call the off-street parking requirements, it states that uses that are not specified in the code in terms of a specific parking requirements shall fall with the planning commission to determine shall fall with the planning commission to determine what that appropriate parking requirement is. And so here in this case, being that you have a four-bedroom unit and a one-bedroom unit, you can impose similar standards to that of a residential property. In this case, if you have four bedrooms on one of the units, as you know, that requires a two-car garage.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Oh, and that just reminded me of another question.
Please, go ahead.
And thank you. I can't remember now, if I saw this. Are they required to comply with ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act?
They are required to meet ADA with respect to the access to the commercial area of the commercial use, meaning handicap parking spaces are required. In this case, they'll be required to have one ADA parking space. From that ADA parking space, they are required to provide a path of travel, a safe path of travel from that spot to the commercial unit. Of course, the commercial unit in itself will have to satisfy ADA requirements in terms of hardware, locations of light fixtures, countertops at the appropriate height requirements, yeah.
Thank you.
Last chance for any questions from the commission? Okay.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I would like to open the public, or I'm sorry, no, this is the time for, well, I guess this is public comments, is the applicant part of public comments? I always got confused about that, part of procedure.
Oh, no.
Yes, Aldo?
Yeah, I apologize. I just wanted to make sure that I put into the record, number one, the various letters and emails that were sent over to the planning commission objecting to this project. I believe one of them was in support of the project, but for the most part, they were objecting to the project. I did receive a few others a little while ago from Amy Fortier, Susan Rudeman, and Allison. I'm not sure of the address, but they all are opposing the project.
I may have asked one thing, Aldo, if I may?
Certainly.
If we could include in the record the listing of properties within the 300-foot radius where the individual addresses, building size, lot size, et cetera, are referenced, that would be, I think, appropriate, given the objective nature of HAA.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to give any presentation that they might like to give on this project.
Thank you, Chair Dustin, and members of the planning commission. This is Richard McDonald with Carlson and Nicholas. I also have with me tonight James Cohen, the architect. The client and owner of the property is here tonight as well, should you have any questions for him. You should have received my October 20th letter, as well as two letters from Yimby Law. The first dated October 9th and the second dated October 27th. And we would ask that all three of those letters be included in the record. Needless to say, we flatly disagree and strongly disagree with the position that you can impose conditions such as are being suggested in your staff report. The Housing Accountability Act is quite clear that you cannot impose conditions that reduce density or interfere with the residential project in the way that you're attempting to do. The conditions that are being proposed here to increase square footage of the commercial part of it are arbitrary. The number 2,400 square feet is blatantly arbitrary. I mean, why 2,400 square feet? Why not 2,100? Why not 1,800? Why not 1,700? We disagree as well with the characterization of the general plan. Quite frankly, if you take a look at Mission Street, you'll see that there are several two-story commercial buildings, as well as just adjacent to us. You have a 2402 Mission Street. You have an adjacent residential building, which is also two stories tall. This project, as we point out in our letters, is permitted under the zoning code. It is a mixed-use project. Like most mixed-use projects throughout Southern California in the United States, the commercial square footage is less than the residential square footage. For example, if you have a building that has 10,000 square feet on the ground floor, you might have four levels of condominium units above it, the total 70,000 or 80,000 square feet. That's often quite typical, the way mixed-use projects are constructed. And mixed-use projects are permitted in your commercial zone. In fact, you approved one at 2405 Huntington Drive back in 2015. So the fact that it is a mixed-use project where the emphasis is on a smaller neighborhood retail frontage because of the current situation vis-à-vis retail on Mission Street makes perfect sense. It's not something that's not inconsistent with your general plan. In fact, it's thoroughly consistent, and it's harmonious with your general plan relating to compatibility, as the architect will explain in a moment. He'll in fact be able to point to the specific addresses along Mission Street that have the various European-style type of architecture, as well as your design guidelines that are objective and allow for and call out for European-style architecture. Couple of other quick points. We disagree that the Housing Accountability Act allows for what I call sort of death by a thousand cuts. In other words, it's not just that you're not allowed to play with the square footages as you're trying to do, but the fact that that creates a ripple effect that requires more parking, that changes the layout of the building. The staff report even refers to the possibility of a 638-square-foot accessory building. But when you start dealing with the increased parking requirements by increasing the square footage of the commercial, you eliminate that possibility, which means you end up in essence having so many consequences started by that change in commercial square footage that you end up eliminating a unit altogether. You create basically a ground floor entirely commercial with only one unit above it, and that's what the Housing Accountability Act prohibits. We... The other thing that the Housing Accountability Act prohibits is doing any conditions that make the project infeasible. And infeasibility includes not just reductions in density, but also economically infeasible. And if you take a look at the recently constructed commercial buildings on Mission Street or any of the actual commercial uses, you can see there's already a high vacancy rate there. So increasing commercial square footage not only creates additional unnecessary square footage along Mission Street, but makes our project financially infeasible as well. So, we wanted to get that on the record, that we just strongly disagree with the staff report. We strongly disagree with staff's interpretation of the Housing Accountability Act. This project, as we point out in my October 20th letter, complies with every objective criteria that you have set forth in your zoning code. It complies with every policy and objective in your general plan. We think it is highly arbitrary and subjective to try to use the general plan to get around the zoning code standards, objective standards. And we would, we believe that the project should be approved as presented. And with that, let me turn it over to James Cohen, the architect, to address the compatibility and design issues.
Hi, thank you. This is James Cohen, 30 North Rainham Avenue, Suite 611, Pasadena, California. And to pick up on what Richard was, where he was leading off, just to go over a couple of the typical objective standards, the required side yard setback in this, on this lot is zero, and we're providing 2.4 on one side and 13 feet on the other. The required front yard setback is zero, where we're requiring, we're providing 2 feet at the tightest point. The rear yard setback is required to be 40 feet, and we are providing 111 feet. The height is a maximum of 30 feet, and we go just to 30 feet only where our chimney is. The other roof is probably about 28 feet. And on the style, yeah, if you go to page eight of the city's commercial design guidelines, it talks about the Mission Street district, and it says, "The architectural design of many older buildings reflect European or Mediterranean themes with recessed building frontages, arched building recesses, and window openings, and tiled roofing and design elements," all of which we have. The next sentence where it says "strategy," still on page eight, says, "Architectural designs compatible with the European/Mediterranean theme are encouraged." That's why we own this theme. I think all of the recent commercial approvals in the Mission District are Spanish, colonial, or Mediterranean-style. And even as you go into the surrounding residential streets, it kind of is the predominant style. So, you know, so both commercially and residentially. Yeah, and as far as compatibility, yeah, three out of the four surrounding buildings are two stories. There's even a three-story building block away over on this road. You have 2,400 Mission, which is an office building, adjacent office building, two-story stall. You have 2,402, which is adjacent residential, two-story stall. You have 2,450, adjacent office, two-story stall. And within 100 feet of 2,404, you have 2,459, which I guess just got approved last year or the year before, the one across the street. And that is Spanish colonial in design. And that's the conclusion of my presentation.
Are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant or the applicant's representative?
Oh.
Yes? Did I hear?
Oh, I said no.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
All right. All right, well then, if there are no questions, let me see, I don't... I had one question. You referred to the roof tiles as their manufacturer is Gladi McBean. You just called them interlocking, but actually Gladi McBean has two types of interlocking tiles, Placer and Lincoln. Do you know which of those you are proposing?
Being that I'm at home for this call, and I'm at my office, I would have the info in front of me, I do not.
All right. Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Again, if you would like to speak, please make that known by using the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you go to the participant panel, at the bottom, you'll see a raised hand button. You can click that, and staff will call on you. Or you can submit a question via the chat. And Aldo, is there any alternate method for people to submit comments?
Yes, certainly, the raised hand feature, and I see Jennifer Giles is the first raised hand feature, or using the raised hand feature. The other method, if you cannot use the raised hand feature for some reason, you could, in the chat box, which is also at the very bottom of your screen, it allows for you to type in your comments, and we can read them out into the record as well. So right now, the raised hand feature is the best way to use this form, and I will then call the names as I see the hands go up, and the first will be Jennifer Giles.
And Director Cervantes, real quick, will staff be monitoring speaker times?
Yes, we can, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and Jennifer Giles is first, and followed by Robert Newell. So Jennifer, go ahead.
Thank you. I submitted my comments digitally via email that you received, and I'd like to touch on some of those again. This mixed-use project proposed to be heard this evening must be denied for the following reasons listed. This project does not meet the current guidelines of our general plan established in 2003. Though this parcel is zoned for commercial use, the owner is proposing, as Aldo said, only 7% of that square footage to be used for that particular purpose. The remaining 93% is proposed as a mansionized residential monstrosity in a low-scale, commercial neighborhood. This project introduces a new layer of density not found anywhere else in our four commercial districts. If the intent is to propose a commercial project, why not just do so? With only 550 square feet of commercial space, charging on average $3 per square foot, which is the billing rate in Mission District, the commercial income from this property would be a measly $1,650 monthly. How can that be a viable commercial asset? The way this project is planned is already infeasible, not going to be infeasible. The project creates a negative impact on the neighboring area by not being respectful of the transition between residential and commercial zones entering San Marino from the west side along Mission Street. Its large 30-foot height, though within the maximum commercial height requirement, looms over the pedestrian sidewalk and the single-story neighborhood feel of that streetscape. A blank 25-foot wall protrudes in the front setback of the adjacent home to the east of the Gordeman family. I ask, is that very neighborly? This is not a project of low-income housing when one of the two units is almost 6,000 square feet in size. Four en suite bedrooms, three massive living room spaces are grossly out of scale to any residence in the immediate area. The project is a ruse, it is deceitful in its intent. The owners had increased their buildable area by reducing down the existing easement from 14 feet to 12 feet to allow even larger of a footprint of an area of development along the street frontage of Mission Street. The applicant previously submitted a residential proposal for a new home that was about 4,000 square feet in size. Today's proposal is 150% larger. And I would like to also point out that of the three approval letters of neighboring residences, two are owned by the applicant themselves. This is unacceptable. I strongly, strongly urge you to deny this project and send the owner and their design team back to the drawing board. Hopefully, their next reiteration will not be an insult to our beautiful city. Thank you.
The next up is Robert. Go ahead, Robert.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I live at 1645 South Euclid Avenue, which is just above the intersection of Euclid and Mission. I firmly object to the applicant's boldness in proposing a 6,000, nearly 6,000-square-foot house. I don't know where that came from, or whose idea that was, but that is completely out of character from the neighborhood. Now, I'll just leave it at that. There was a similar mixed-use project kind of across the street from the current project. I think the address was 2461 Mission. There was an effort to have two residential and two commercial units there bordering the street, and that was turned down. I recommend that the commission examine the reasoning of that turn down, and that declination, I suggest, is applicable at this point here. That's really the limits of my comments. I recommend that the project be turned down, not conditionally agreed to, which I think was staff's recommendation. I wasn't sure what is actually, Mr. Cervantes, what you're proposing, because I think I heard you say, "We should approve it." I guess you add a bunch of conditions, but there's actually an approval in there, and I highly disagree with the approval. Thank you.
Chair, at this moment, I do not see any additional hands raised. Again, those who want to speak regarding this project, you can use the raised hand feature, and I will call on you. Again, I will note, Chair, that we did receive a number of letters from residents expressing their concerns or views about the project, and the three that I had read into the record a little while ago. Right now, again, I don't see any raised hand features. I don't have any additional emails that were provided to staff. And so that's, at this moment, there's no others who wish to participate.
All right, then if there's no one else online that wishes to comment on this project, I will close the public hearing at this time, and I will open deliberations amongst the commissioners. Let's start with Commissioner Brody, if you have some thoughts you'd like to hear.
No, thank you very much. One of the things that we have to deal with in this particular application is the Housing Accountability Act, and the key word in that act is housing, uh, excuse me, the Housing Accountability Act, and, uh, the key word in that act is objectivity. Uh, I had asked, and was made part of the record, that we have a listing of properties within the 300-foot radius, uh, and, uh, those properties were designated not only by address, but by building size and lot size. When we look at the application, we have a commercial, uh, portion, uh, around 550 square feet, I think it's full short of that, and a first-floor residential of 638 square feet. If we were to add a second floor and partially first-floor residential, that would make the residential square footage greater than any other residential square footage that we see within the 300-foot radius, that number for the second floor and first-floor residential would be around 2,200 square feet, not 5,934. And that would make it the biggest when you add the entirety of the residential, uh, in this project, around slightly over 2,800 square feet. There's only two structures that I've found that are greater than that in the 300, uh, foot radio, radius, and that is, uh, 1836 McFarland, and that has 75% greater lot size, and that goes up to 3,858 in, in building size. And then the other one is at 2402 Mission, which has almost twice the square footage of what, uh, what the lot size is for the applicant. It's 23,0624, and that only has a building size of 3,257, uh, which is relatively modest compared to the, what the applicant is proposing, which is, uh, just off the charts. My only question, when I looked at these numbers and I started to do the calculation, is as long as they're throwing out six, 7,000, uh, square feet in residential, why not make it 10 or 12? Why not make it 15 or 16? Uh, it, it makes no sense. None of that makes any sense. If you're going to keep it within the realm, within the range, and maybe at the highest, the highest number of residential square footage for the 300, uh, foot radius, you're only going to have the ability, uh, to construct a first and second-floor residential in addition to the 638, uh, on the ground floor and the 546 or so commercial of around 2,200 square feet, no more than that. Uh, so what we're seeing here is, uh, something that's totally out of line objectively, totally out of line objectively with what we have in this 300-foot radius. So as far as I'm concerned, I would be, uh, amenable, uh, to looking at this project. I think when you're reducing the size, uh, by about 3,700 square feet, uh, you're going to be impacting the design. So I would certainly, uh, be amenable to, uh, the concept of these two residential units and the, and the little tiny commercial unit, uh, but it has to comply with, uh, and, and objectively, uh, match up with what we're looking at in the 300-foot, uh, radius. I mean, it's just common sense, objectively speaking. And so that's where I see this going, uh, again, from my perspective. We're talking about a 3,700 square-foot reduction on the first and second floor. That's my point of view on this. Hello?
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Brody. Uh, Vice Chair Boyle, do you have, uh, any comments you'd like to make?
I do, and thank you, Chair Dustin, um, and to my newer, uh, Planning Commission colleagues. Every once in a while, I take my time, uh, my allotted time to do a more extended commentary, and that is what I will be doing tonight. Um, I want to say outright that I will be, uh, reading something because I want to make sure that I'm clear. Uh, I have time to myself, it should be under five minutes, and it is about four bullet points. Um, the first thing that I want to say is that there has been a trend lately in which lawyers are becoming more involved on agenda items. This is occurring before we, the Planning Commission, has even had a chance to review the packet. This type of advocacy invokes, for me, an automatic antagon- and antagonism that I don't appreciate. Lawyers are tasked with being zealous advocates for their clients and not balancing the interests of the community along with the needs of their clients. I would like to remind current and future applicants that this body is a citizen-led community. We are volunteers. We all have an equal investment in this town and our community. We are your neighbors, we are your fellow residents, we are the parents of your children's playmates, and we can be your advocates. This balancing is hard to do when each agenda item we received is received with threats of litigation, personal threats and demands which, which, which push the envelope of acceptability for our community. If the proposed project fits within already established guidelines and is consistent with the general plan, then why would you need a lawyer? The perception becomes that your project does not fit with our community because you have to fight to get it approved. We, as a board, all sit here and are extremely polite and respective, respected. This level of courtesy is hard to reflect back when the same courtesy and politeness is not afforded to us at the outset. Second, as it pertains to the general plan, we are tasked with weighing each agenda item against it. The general plan has not been revised since 2003. To give perspective, in 2003, we all still had dial-up internet, and the iPhone was four years away from being invented. To be clear, there is nowhere in that general plan which states that mixed-use projects are permitted in the city of San Marino. The reality is that we, as a community, need to address changes to the general plan. To that, I look at the city manager to prepare a significant update to the general plan that, again, has not been revised in 17 years. I would like to also note that a general plan and a strategic plan are not a one-page, five-bullet-point document of the city council's current priorities. A plan needs to be a five-to-10-year living document that includes all of the purposes, policies, and programs for the development of our city, and that anticipates the changes that our city will need and the challenges we will face. It needs to reflect the concerns and priorities of all members of our community. It also needs to address the ongoing problem with owners that choose to squat on their own properties, which, I would argue, contributes to the housing crisis and the ongoing housing shortage more than, that will not be resolved by the addition of these two residences proposed of this property. We need to address the ghost town on Huntington Drive, again, created by property owners that would rather take a tax loss on an empty property than investing in our community. The problem of not having a relevant general plan to follow is now acute, and it interferes with this body's ability to make informed decisions. Each decision we are now making is essentially ad hoc, as it is based upon a document that is silent to situations such as the one that is currently before us. Third, and this is to the applicants, I am well aware and informed that you own several properties on this part of Mission, and it appears that you have previously attempted and are attempting to acquire as many of the properties in this area of town as you can. From my perspective, it appears that you have a larger agenda with the piecemeal property acquisitions. Personally, I am constantly evaluating the balance between an owner's right to build the projects they desire against the community's need to have a beautiful, safe space consistent with the general plan. I would ask that you internalize the same idea and question if you are being good neighbors with your proposed project and can affirmatively answer that your project is consistent with the community standards and that, when complete and operational, will add value to the community as a whole and not just value to you. At the very least, if you or your attorneys cannot objectively answer that last question, then please be open and honest about what your larger plan is for this area so that we can be made aware of that goal and not be duped into something by making decisions on your project, only to find out that we are also being duped later and finding that what you intend is not for the betterment of this community. Lastly, plain and simple, we do not have mention of mixed use in our city code. You can throw HAA and whatever housing code in our fates, but these alone do not require us to make decisions inconsistent with our current general plan. We do not have mixed use in our current code. We might in the future, but that would require the city to make a priority of creating a general plan that addresses a future use. For example, Stoneman, the vacancies on Huntington, the addition of allowing mixed use to accommodate housing that we are required to add in the next years. A marketing plan to attract businesses instead of new developments that we have recently approved just to sit vacant. And I could go on. As far as I'm concerned, I do not have the authority to approve or deny this based on the fact that we do not have anything in our current general plan for this situation and without guidance from city council. As to the future of our city, we must deny your project without prejudice until such time as the general plan is updated to address the situation and make the requisite findings that mixed use, such as you have proposed here, is consistent with the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Boyle. Commissioner Wright.
I have to follow her? Okay, that was very eloquent.
Thank you, Jerry.
I, um, I too have concerns about this project. Um, I'm still unclear, frankly, if it is consistent, if it does comply with, uh, as the Housing Accountability Act says. It says it's got to comply with applicable objective general plan zoning and subdivision standards, including design review standards. Okay. I'm, I'm clear if, whether it does that. And if I look to our design review standards, I am in agreement with Commissioner Brody, it's massive. It's too massive, it's not compatible, it does not comply with our design review standards. Um, and, and you look around the, the area, and it's, it, it, it just would stick out, it's, it's not, it's not compatible. I also think it's inconsistent with our plan. Um, our plan supports commercial, I think we, in fact, I think when this came before us, before, I commented how I would like this lot to be a 100% commercial. I think that's what the plan wants. I think we want more pedestrian-friendly, um, walkable, uh, areas, and Mission is certainly more conducive to that, I think, than, um, Huntington Drive, sadly, I wish Huntington Drive were as well. Um, but I just think there are some, um, problems with this project in, um, complying with, uh, with design review and complying with our plan. Parking, um, is, is an issue, not enough, again, not, not consistent, not compatible. So I don't think that I could, um, support this, uh, project.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm calling you Chair Wright. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Che.
Always your chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair Dustin. Uh, you know, I, I will echo and, and agree with the, uh, comments already made by the other commissioners. Um, I will add that specific to the design review portion, uh, of the consideration this evening. I, I don't feel the property is compatible. Um, you know, on the merits and objectively looking at the property as designed right now, uh, it sits between a, a commercial building to the west and then a single-family residence to the east. Um, you know, the choice of architecture, the color, the size, the height, uh, the massing pays no deference to the home to the east, uh, and it, it has no compatibility or, uh, does not aesthetically play with the, um, commercial building to the west. On its merits and objectively, that's, that can't be argued. It, it'll stick out like a sore thumb, even in the rendering provided by the architect and the applicant. Uh, it, you can see, and it's very quite obvious to anyone, uh, that has, uh, any form of understanding of architecture, that the, the home, the property and the mixed-use proposed building, uh, would not be suitable, uh, as design. Uh, I would not be able to support the project. Uh, I also agree that in an iteration and form where there is a reduction in the overall residential size and increase in the overall commercial size, uh, and not to reduce the density that's being requested, however, being reallocated across, as the staff has suggested, I think that would be better serve the community. Um, finally, my last comment would be, if, if there is any consideration whatsoever to look at the design, typically in mixed-use property projects, uh, where there is residential and commercial, there is clearly a defined commercial entrances to the businesses and a separate, uh, entrance dedicated to the residential. That is not, uh, present here, it's not relevant. Uh, the, the, someone that's going to visit the business has no indication, at least without signage, uh, where they would be going. You'd have people visiting the property to, to, to visit the, the commercial property, and there is no kind of difference or breakup between, uh, knocking on the door of the home or knocking on the door of the, uh, uh, commercial property. So I, I think there's a lot of, um, issues here, and I would not be able to support the project.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Okazaki.
Yeah, you know, at a, at a personal level, I, I supported the, uh, the owner when he had his previous proposal here for a, uh, house for his family, including access to his parents' house in the back. I realized that at that time, uh, it was a little controversial, uh, in a sense that it was a large complex, uh, two-story, 4,000-square-foot house. But, uh, I, I think the commissioners were, uh, sympathetic and believed, uh, in the, uh, the words, uh, and the passion that the owner had, that he was a, a, a member of the community, he was going to stay here forever, kind of a thing, and, and, and wanted to make this a, uh, uh, you know, a place that he, he could raise his family. This particular project, the mixed use, it, to me, is sort of a, I don't know, uh, like a wolf in a, uh, wool, uh, lamb's clothing, so to speak. 50% or 150% larger housing from 4,000 to 6,000 square foot in just a tiny commercial. And, uh, as, uh, Commissioner Boyle said earlier, you know, when we looked at the house, uh, the project on the north side of the street, just a little bit east of Euclid, uh, there was a, I thought a better mixed-use project that made sense to me, where two units of, uh, residential, uh, was on top and, you know, condominium types and, and the retail, two, two, uh, retail offices in the, or two, uh, commercial, uh, space in the ground floor. That made sense. This, where you got most of the building as a house, 6,000 square feet in just, uh, 600 feet of commercial, and, and an extra 600 feet to rent out as an apartment, to me is, uh, like I said, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be a legitimate or an honest presentation of what they're trying to do. Uh, and I'm personally very disappointed in having supported the owner who wanted to have a residential project here, which we approved a couple of years ago. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just sort of heartbroken to see this project, which doesn't make sense to me, and is out of scale. Uh, it doesn't fit in with the general plan nor compatible in my mind. Uh, walking, you know, I walk, uh, to go to South Pass dinner for my evening walks with my dog every day, and I see this, you know, looking forward to, to the residential project, and all of a sudden I see this mixed-use project is, is really disheartening and disappointing me, disappointing to me, uh, and, uh, said earlier also by, uh, And said earlier also by the Commissioner Boyle, sort of threatening us with a lawyer presenting, you know, the right to build this project on the basis of the HAA as they see it. And so I'm not even supportive of the staff report. I'm really, really against this project as currently presented. I hope we could work together with the owner and the architect to come up with something more compatible for the city of San Marino, Mission Street, which I think is a very, very nice street for strolling. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Okazaki. Boy, it sounds like my colleagues have some fairly strong feelings on this. I also find this project very difficult to comprehend aesthetically, civic-mindedly, I just don't really, I'm having, I'm understanding the motivations behind it. However, I do want to make an effort here in the interest of sort of meeting, arranging a meeting of the minds. I'm going to propose some things that may, that I think would go a long way in helping mitigate the problems with this project. It doesn't sound like I'm going to get a lot of support, but I think it's important to at least put the options out there. Yes, this project is massive, obscenely massive, but there are, I think, things that can be done, as evidenced by some of the conditions suggested by city staff, there are lots of things that could be done to make the project more palatable. In addition to the conditions suggested by staff, some of the things that I have thought about, and I know Commissioner Chang and Commissioner Wright have pointed out the incompatibility of the architectural style itself. It is, that particular block of Mission, that streetscape, is very verdant, it's very forested in its look. The two other properties that border this unit mirror that, they have very natural, one is a little arts and crafts bungalow, a single-story residence. Even that two-story office building to the west, it's all natural wood siding, stained, dark muted colors that blend in with the trees around. I have no way of comprehending how the Mediterranean or Spanish Revival style would work on this block. The arts and crafts architectural style that was proposed for the residential unit here previously is far better suited. So I would encourage thinking about a change to that architectural style. I think, again, because of the unique location of this lot with, there are two-story office buildings on Mission, I acknowledge that, and I think a two-story project is not unimaginable in this location, but you must recognize the transition needs from the two-story to the west to the single-story to the east. The plate heights on this property are just, again, obscene, given the circumstances. Reducing the plate heights from 10 feet to, let's say, no more than 8, 6, 9 feet on the first floor and 8 feet on the second floor would go substantially towards addressing that visual imposition. Again, all the exterior lighting that they're proposing, that just would be a real nuisance at night with all that lighting. All those external lights should be, could be relocated underneath a recessed ceiling someplace, so you wouldn't have glare and scattering light all about the neighborhood when the business district is closed. The windows, and this applies whether you go with the Mediterranean Spanish colonial style or the arts and crafts, these are traditional styles. Clear, single-paneled patio doors are not compatible with that style, they are a contemporary look and they do not fit. Any windows, patio doors on any project that goes with either of those styles needs to have traditional divided lights. And then lastly, I just have, I have some serious concerns about a commercial unit, especially if it's going to be expanded as recommended by city staff, to have a commercial unit with no restroom facilities. To me, that's a public health issue. You have somebody who's working in an office all day, they're going to rely on the goodness of their neighbor's restaurant or whatever to let them use the restroom. What if they're working late and the other businesses in the district are closed? That's just, that doesn't make sense to me. So I guess I wanted to address, lastly, this issue of, you know, the five-meeting limitation that we apparently have on this project, I want to be sensitive to that. It sounds like the majority of our body is inclined to propose a denial. Now that everybody's had a chance to speak, are there any other comments that people would like to make?
Well, the one comment I would make is, listening to your proposed suggestions, and Commissioner Brody also, of course, talked about how it would have to be a much lower density, for example, I can't imagine, based on the way this has occurred, that the applicant would be amenable to coming back with any of these proposed changes. You could certainly ask. I would be surprised. And so my point being, what is the point of continuing it for something if they're amenable?
And I'm sensitive of that as well, because, again, if we only have five meetings to sort this out, it looks like, you know, there's a real strong possibility of an appeal here, no matter what happens. So I don't know that there's any value in continuing. Do I have a motion from anyone?
I wanted to, I wanted to make an observation, though. You know, that the planning commission had approved a beautiful 4,000-square-foot two-story house. It appears to me that the owner found a way to get 50% more square footage for his house by using the law, HAA, and the fact that this is zoned for commercial, to create a larger home for himself and his family. And that the commercial is really not, you know, that part of the building is not something that he was interested in. He was just interested in, to me, my observation, that he wanted a bigger house. And we didn't approve it before, we scaled it down to 4,000 square feet for him, which obviously wasn't good enough, was not big enough for him. So as I said, this is a wolf in a wolf's clothing, sheep's clothing kind of a thing, project, which is not, you know, you're sort of circumventing what the community and the planning commission wanted for this site two years ago when we approved that project. And so I'm personally very offended and very saddened by what the homeowner is trying to do.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion if it's...
Go ahead, Commissioner Brody, yes.
Yeah, thank you. That I'd move to continue the matter with the proviso, with the sole proviso, that one of the prerequisites of a continuance would be that the residential square footage, the totality of it, be reduced by 3,700 square feet. And that we review a, obviously, a new design, because when you're losing that much square footage, you're talking about major design changes that incorporate some of the remarks that have been stated here. But I think that's a major prerequisite to objectively, to objectively comply with the building size and lot size within the 300-foot radius. And with that, with that, they will be the large, have the largest residential square footage under 14,000 square foot lot. There's only two lots that are greater than that, and they are substantially greater. One is over 19,000 square feet, and the other one's over 20, almost 24,000 square. And they're not comparable. So what we're looking at here is being reasonable and being objective. And if the applicant is amenable to such a reduction, we would be, at least I would be more than happy to revisit this.
I would support that motion, again, if the applicant's amenable to any conditions on the continuance, Chair.
May I get a clarification then from everybody? There is no design guidelines for mixed use, but am I hearing that the commission now is accepting or considering mixed use for Mission Street?
What you're hearing, James, is that we are attempting to comply with the most recent enactment of our legislative in Sacramento, the HAA. And as much as some of my fellow commissioners bemoan the fact that there were attorneys on this planet, and Shakespeare said, "Kill all the lawyers." Besides all that, the reality is, we've got to deal with the real world, and this is the real world.
But the real world also states that our general plan does not have provisions for mixed use.
I hear you, Shelley, I hear you. That would be my, that would be my motion.
And Chair, you have a motion? And I think that the protocol is looking for a second.
Oh, second.
Yeah, Commissioner Chang seconded it. I would ask Director Cervantes, so then we have a motion, we have a second, should we take a roll call and then inquire from the applicant if he would be amenable to that?
I think the applicant being amenable should be a prerequisite to taking a roll call, because this is a motion that he has to agree with. And, you know, I'd love to hear from the applicant whether that is acceptable. If it isn't acceptable, then what's the use in proceeding with that motion? That's my thought.
Howard, you know, if you reduce 3,700 square feet from the residential portion, it is something, his unit's going to be smaller than what he already got approved for, which was close to 4,000 feet the last time.
Look, James, I wasn't there. All I'm doing is the objective analysis of the building size and lot size within the 300.
Howard, I think you were there two years ago.
No, not on, no, I don't think.
Let's go back to, let's go back to the question at hand, there is a motion and a second on the table, do we have to ask the applicant first if they are amenable to this, or do we vote and then go on?
I think, I think we'd need to hear from the applicant before we vote on the motion.
Well, Chair, the question right now, of course, the motion on the table is to continue the matter with specific direction, and so the question of the applicant is if they're amenable to a continuance.
With a reduction of 3,700 square feet.
With the direction right, correct.
Could we get a response from the applicant or the applicant's representative?
This is Richard McDonald on behalf of the applicant. I actually disagree with staff, having made your motion and seconded it, I don't think it's appropriate for us to say one way or the other. Typically, under Robert's rules of orders, those sort of things come up before such a motion is made, but you've made your motion, you've seconded it, and a roll call then under Robert's rules is in order.
Okay, let me amend the motion, if I may, that that would be the recommended motion, and if it's not acceptable, then we've done the most reasonable and objective thing that could be done, and short of the applicant accepting that very modest change, it would still make the building size residentially for any lot size under 14,000 square feet to be the biggest in the 300 radius area. If it's not acceptable and we don't hear from the applicant again with regard to such a reduction, then alternatively, it would incorporate a denial.
May I get a clarification on something? That is, did the owner already withdraw his approved project for the two-story residential on this property? When he initiated this new project?
I would ask Director Cervantes to respond to that.
So first of all, as a matter of protocol, we have a motion on the table to, at this point, as amended by Commissioner Brody, to motion to deny the project. And so that is, at the moment, on hold. Alternate, Okazaki, the applicant did not withdraw that application, it was denied by the city council, so that project is not active. So there's a motion on the table, is there a second?
A second.
Can I ask for some clarification, because I'm not sure I understand the motion? Commissioner Brody, is this the intent of your motion, that you are, you are motioning that we deny this project unless we receive indication from the applicant that he's willing to reduce the residential size of the, the size of the residential portion of this project by 3,700 square feet, and then we would continue it?
It's kind of the more negative aspect of it. My motion was kind of the reverse, that we would continue the matter with the proviso that there would be a reduction in the residential square footage by 3,700 square feet, and if the applicant chooses not to do so, alternatively, the motion would call for a denial of the application.
So we have a motion and a second.
And it sounds, just to throw my two cents in there, it did sound, when we posed the question to the applicant, that they disagree with that ability to make that motion, so I assume that the disagreement on the ability of planning commission to make that motion would essentially be a rejection of that reduction.
Well, why don't we just leave it as an alternative, and maybe the applicant will have second thoughts after the meeting.
So we are going to take a roll call on this motion as it stands, and then solicit feedback from the applicant, is that...
No, and the applicant could certainly schedule with staff a subsequent meeting with the planning.
Yeah, Commissioner Wright, please.
Just wanted to ask a question. Protocol comes in my brain, because everyone talks about protocol. The applicant's representative refused to answer the question because there was a motion on the table. Can that motion be withdrawn?
If it resulted in an answer, I'd be more than happy to withdraw it.
My concern is, I feel...
Procedurally, if we do a roll call, and hypothetically, if the motion fails, then we are, we don't have a motion on the floor, and a question could be posed to the applicant at that time, correct?
Correct.
So I think that's where we are right now.
Let's proceed that way.
There you go.
All right, let's proceed.
Okay, so I will go through a roll call, there was a first and a second. Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
Vice Chair Boyle?
No.
Chair Dustin?
No.
The motion fails.
All right. Do we have any other motions?
Well, I would ask the chair, ask of the applicant what they've heard this evening and what the direction is going, if they would be amenable to any changes. And if not, I think that leads to a denial.
So I'll pose a question to the applicant, given the discussion you've heard thus far, would you be amenable to modification of the proposal to reduce the residential portion by 3,700 square feet?
Richard McDonald, again, on behalf of the applicant, since you just voted down that idea, I don't know why we would consider it. You just voted it down. You just took a formal vote, formally and officially rejecting that motion. So why, I don't even understand why you're asking me the question, given that you just denied that idea. So why, I, I don't even understand why you're asking me the question, given that you just denied that idea.
Really, the only two motions that are in play now is either, uh, a, a motion to, uh, continue, without prejudice, I guess. There's also a, an ability of the, of the planning commission to motion for denial. Uh, as well, there's also the, the motion to approve it with conditions if the planning commission sees fit.
So I move to deny, uh, CUP twenty dash oh five, CUP twenty dash sixteen, and DRC twenty dash twenty-nine HP.
Do we have a second? Roll call, please.
Who, who's second?
Commissioner Wright.
Okay, um, let me do roll call and, uh, Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
And I believe that was a, a four, four one?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, four one, to, to deny the project.
All right, let's move on. The next item on the agenda is conditional use permit, uh, CUP twenty dash twelve at twenty-six fifty Mission Street. Could we have the, uh, staff report, please?
Sure, uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, conditional use permit number CUP twenty dash twelve, uh, is a request, uh, to operate a commercial recreation facility named The Exercise Coach, uh, at twenty-six fifty Mission Street, Suite one oh five. Uh, The Exercise Coach proposes to provide appointment-based business, with, uh, within an existing commercial structure. Uh, this request requires a conditional use permit pursuant to section twenty-three point zero three point oh one of the San Marino City Code. Uh, the proposed, uh, tenant space will be, uh, excuse me, in a one thousand nine hundred and forty-one square foot, uh, tenant space, which is currently vacant and is formerly, uh, the site of Protocol, a retail gift store, which has since relocated. Parking is to be determined, uh, by the planning commission as set forth in section twenty-three point one oh, point oh three. Uh, vehicular access, vehicular and pedestrian access to the property are both along Mission Street, with, uh, parking provided to the east and to the south of the building. The property has a total of fifty-six off-street parking spaces with additional public spaces available along Mission Street and a city-owned parking lot located directly across the street. Uh, previous commercial recreation facilities in San Marino have been analyzed using the parking ratio of one space for every, uh, two hundred and fifty square feet of floor area. Based on this calculation, seven spaces should be provided, uh, for the one thousand nine hundred and forty-one, uh, square foot tenant space. Uh, staff can make the conditional use permit, uh, findings required for a granting conditional use permit for this use. Uh, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff on this item? No? Okay. Then, uh, if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present, could you please, uh, give your presentation, uh, on this project to the commission?
Sure, thank you, Chairman Dustin, Commissioners and, uh, Director Cervantes. My name's Peter Young. I live at one twenty-one South Hope Street, Los Angeles, California. The Exercise Coach is an appointment-based led fitness system. It's coach-led. And, um, our program works for everyone, but our target market is people between forty and about seventy. And, um, what we want to do is we want to help people get fitter by making them stronger. Um, each individual is individually coached by a, um, trained and certified, um, instructor, so that they can get the most out of their exercise safely and efficiently. Um, we use a combination of high-tech-enabled exercise equipment, where we've been able to, uh, leverage the latest in fitness and exercise science. And we focus on improving strength and muscle quality, which is the key to good health, especially as we get older. And, um, it's gonna be, it's, it's, it's a low-volume operation. It's not a group thing. Our clients tend to be people that don't like gyms, don't fit in the gyms, are uncomfortable with the gym scene. They, um, want their purposeful in what they do. They want to go in, exercise, have that exercise demonstrate results to them, and then go about their day. Relative to, um, demand, it tends to be earlier in the morning. And later in the afternoon and into the evening is the busy time when, um, as part of my process, I did a survey of the businesses in that area, and they all tend to open in the nine to ten o'clock range and close around five, five-thirty. And so, um, our busy time, which won't be that busy, it's just a few people, will be in, um, at the same time that the businesses are not operating. So I see it being a really, really nice fit in that area. And when you look at that space, which is on the inside of the parking lot, in between the twenty-six fifty building and the building where Seraphina is, it's really not a great retail space because it doesn't get walked by traffic and it's not very visible from the street. So I think this is a perfect use for it, since it's appointment-based. I think the parking is good and I would, uh, enjoy being able to provide what I think is a terrific service to the people of San Marino and the surrounding areas.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions for the applicant? I, I have just a couple. I, I noticed on the application, you're listed as both, uh, or you're listed on the application as the owner of the property. Is that correct, or are you the owner of the business or both?
I am the owner of the business. The, um, owner of the property is, uh, LLC called One International, I believe is their name.
Uh, and then your application states that your proposed business would have two dedicated parking spots, but I noticed the previous business for that spot had five spaces assigned to them. Is, is there a reason why you wouldn't get all five?
Yeah, um, that, there was a, uh, a, a change in my process initially. Um, we were looking at, um, in the same building space, number two oh eight. And, um, I was thinking that that was going to be my space when, when I, um, put in the application because I wanted to get out in front of things because of the time that's involved in the, in the process. As I got into that process, Suite one oh five became available. I thought that was a much more suitable site. It appeared the two oh eight wasn't gonna work because it was a sublet situation. And, um, it happened to work out that was good for everybody, so I will get the five spaces. Short answer, wrong answer to your short question. I will get the five spaces.
Thank you. Uh, and then lastly, um, would you ever have group sessions and individual sessions taking place at the same time?
Um, if there was, I don't think so because, well, for example, we will, we will allocate time for group because certain, some people like group because they, they, they don't want to pay for an individual session. A group session is gonna be a little bit less money. So, we'll allocate space and there might only be one person in that group session while we wait for it to build, up to three. And so if there was only one person scheduled for group, it could happen that we could schedule somebody for an individual session, but the, the, it would be two people. So I just want to explain, you know, I don't want to.
And then, uh, last question, you stated in your application that your, the exercise sessions for your clients are thirty minutes. I admit it's been a long time since I've been in a gym, but, uh, my recollection is, is that usually workout times go more in the, on the order of an hour. But is that?
Yeah, no, it's, it's actually, the sessions are twenty minutes, but the turnaround's gonna be thirty within and out. And, and, and that kind of thing. And, um, one of the big changes in exercise science, especially as you identify, um, opportunities for strength and with our specialized equipment at protocols, is, is that if you thoroughly exhaust a muscle in, um, a very specific way, you get really good results and you actually need three or four days to recover. And, um, will improve your metabolism, will improve your call it. I've been in business for thirty-five years and, and I used to be in bigger business and then ran a, a, a small family business for, for our family. And I did this because I think it's fun and I think it's gonna work and I think it's gonna provide great value to the community.
I have a question, Commissioner Dustin.
Yes, please.
Yeah, uh, my question is, uh, with the COVID nineteen restrictions, are you able to occupy the building, uh, and have the exercise program, while the COVID nineteen restrictions still exist? Because you didn't ask for any outside permission, right? It just.
No.
It's gonna be all indoors.
I'll, I'll say. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you, you, you'll be able to perform this exercise, uh, routines indoors with two to three people in there physically? With the trainers?
The.
There's no restriction on the exercise indoors?
As the state and county rules stand now, um, I could not open.
That's what I thought, okay.
Okay, I plan to open in January. I'm making a little bit of a bet that we'll be okay by then. But, um, if I can't open, I can't open, and that's my problem.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, uh, I would like to then open it to, um, the public, uh, for comment. Uh, is there anyone who would like to speak for, against, or about this project? If so, uh, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom application and let city staff know you'd like to speak.
It doesn't look like we have any requests to speak.
Okay, so then I will close public, you know, portion, hearing, uh, public comment portion of the hearing. Uh, and let's open it up to, um, debate amongst the Commissioners. And I've lost my agenda sheet that tells me, uh, let's see, give me a minute here. Well, why don't, uh, we start with Commissioner Wright?
Okay, um, well, I think I could, uh, support the staff report. It wouldn't be my, um, preference, honestly, for, uh, that, that use in that, um, that spot, just because I think we have probably a lot of those uses. But I, I think I could still make the findings. My only question, comment, problem, uh, was parking. And, um, I think that's been satisfied. And so I think I could support it.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Chang?
Yes, uh, I agree. I, I think the, I, I like the business that this bring, being brought. I think it could be helpful to the community and useful, and I think, um, meeting the, the requisite parking requirements, I'd be able to support.
Uh, Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, I could support it as well.
Okay. And, uh, Commissioner, Vice Chair Boyle?
Uh, similar to Commissioner Wright, I, um, have reservations with regards to yet another gym coming into the city, specifically in that location, because I do feel as though that location could be useful with other, um, applications. But, um, you know, it meets all of the requirements and so, uh, it, I can support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki?
Yeah, ditto what Shelley said. Thank you.
And, um, I also, I, I can make all the required findings for the requested conditional use permit, so I, I don't have any, uh, objections. Uh, do I have a motion?
Um, if I can find the title page.
I'll move to approve conditional use permit number CUP twenty dash twelve.
Thank you. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Excuse me, who, who was the second? I, I looked down for a second.
I, I believe it was both, uh, Commissioner Chang and Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Boyle, both seconded.
Pick one.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, let's move on to agenda item number three.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Welcome, good luck.
Thank you.
Design review, uh, DRC twenty dash twenty-one at twenty-three eighteen Huntington Drive. Uh, this is, uh, a request for signage on, um, a building. Uh, can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The applicant, which is the operator and property owner, um, for a new business known as the San Marino Pediatric Dentistry, has applied for new signage for the business. Um, the application was denied by the DRC and the applicant is requesting that the planning commission reconsider, um, the denial from the DRC. The project involves one illuminated sign, wall sign, fronting Huntington Drive, and one non-illuminated wall sign, um, above the rear entrance, um, that is visible from the service alley behind the Huntington Drive location. So the request was be, before the DRC on July fifth and August seventeenth of this year. Um, at the first hearing, the DRC was concerned with the potential lighting pollution from the brightness of the sign. And they find that the illuminated sign is not compatible with the business district. Um, at the second hearing, um, the design review ultimately, the, the DRC ultimately denied the project, finding that the business owner was unresponsive to the committee's comment from the prior, um, hearing and that the business owner was unavailable to discuss possible alternative app, uh, act, um, actions, I'm sorry, for the signage. In terms of design review finding, staff was able to locate, um, sixteen businesses along the south side of Huntington Drive between Richway Road and Hunting, and Ken, Kennewith Avenue. Based on this windshield survey, there are to, a total of six illuminated signage on this block. These signage were either approved prior to the establishment of the design review committee, so it is possible that they, the signage never went before a, um, hearing body, however, they do exist today. Um, the proposed signage, the illuminated sign that is of, um, concern here, um, it does not change color and the intensity of the illumination, um, would not be so bright that would, that it would become a nuisance or cause a traffic safety concern. But at recent step is supporting this request and recommend that the planning commission overturn the design review committee's denial of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present or the applicant's representative to?
I, could I?
I'm sorry, that's right, we have questions for staff.
Yeah, I, I was on that review committee at the time. So, uh, is it appropriate for me to rule on this, or should I just set aside?
I believe you would need to recuse yourself.
I would think so. I just wanted clarification on that.
Oh, so, oh, both?
Yes.
You're up, James.
Question for staff?
Yes, please.
I do too. After, after Commissioner Wright, I have a question as well.
Yeah, um, okay, I'm wondering what, if any, objective standards are in the code to regulate sign? I mean, so now it goes to design review, but does design review have any, um, objective criteria that, to guide them as to what is allowed or promoted in our city?
The language states in the code, um, it's not as clear as we would like it to be. Um, however, um, that paragraph is provided on the staff report immediately under the type, the section analysis. It is a very limited, um, section. It talks about signage being compatible with the nature or quality of nearby architecture and buildings. So that is the guideline for looking at compatibility, um, of signage.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, okay. I still have a question. Okay, thank you. I just, as a point of clarification, because I am just a little curious, there seems to be another San Marino Pediatric Dentist.
there seems to be another San Marino Pediatric Dentistry Dentistry at San Gabriel and Huntington. On, it's still San Marino proper, but it's in, it's across from the Trader Joe's. So I just want to know, like, I guess it's just a curiosity, like, if there's already a San Marino Pediatric Dentistry, and now we have a second one, but it seems that I believe unless the owner can explain, it seems that they're two different businesses, like, do we have any, I mean, I don't, I don't know how to say it. It just seems that it's like, do we have any regulations about two businesses having it the exact same name with it, like, you know, in their signs, even though their signs are different?
Uh, could I clarify that?
Uh, hello?
Yes. Hi, my name is Steve Troy.
Actually, can we, if 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 the applicant's gonna answer that, can we hold that response then for when?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want, I have a question for.
Hang on, I want, I'm sorry, James, just a minute. I wanted to just make sure that Vice Chair Boyle didn't have any additional questions.
Um, I mean, the only thing that I, only because it was brought up after Commissioner Wright asked her question, um, so I guess I just don't understand. You said, Eva, you said something about like the sign had to be compatible with neighboring signs, but it has to be compatible with to the building it's on as well, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, you just threw me for a second, so thank you. That's perfect. Thank you so much.
And now Commissioner Okazaki, please.
Yeah, so Eva, so was it you that looked at the signs at night and looked at the other 16 signs and and came to the conclusion that the signs were relatively, I don't know, consistent and not, and you come to the conclusion that this this recommended light fixture is not too bright? Or that it that it fits in? I mean, that was, that was your conclusion, or somebody else in the staff that made that conclusion? Before you made this recommendation?
Yes, so I was the project planner that took the project to the DRC. The pictures that you see in your packet was provided, they were provided by the applicant, which is the sign contractor. However, I have personally witnessed
You saw it at night?
At nighttime, yes.
Okay, all right.
Do any other commissioners have questions for city staff at this time? Okay, I have one question. Can you tell me what regulations, if any, there are regarding temporary signage? Like, how long can a business leave up a canvas banner sign or a vinyl banner sign?
So we do have temporary signage permit requirement. In this particular particular case, Chair, you are probably referring to a type of sub temporary sign called grand opening signs. We do allow that type of grand opening signage to be larger in size and to incorporate different types of elements, maybe balloons or other things that would attract attention to that location. And they are allowed to have that grand opening period of 60 days.
60 days for a grand opening. What about just a sign that has the name of the business on it?
For the purpose of temporary nature, in in terms of like advertising seasonal sales and.
No, no, this is just a vinyl banner with the name of the business.
I can, I can answer that. In in light of the the COVID situation that we're dealing with, and also in relation to businesses sort of suffering during this time because of the closures, the council adopted a, an urgency ordinance that follows the sort of the timeline of the emergency, the emergency provision of of the, uh, of of this of this COVID crisis, which means that as long as the COVID crisis is in play, this ordinance is also active. And what the ordinance does, it does allow for the ability of of my position as a director to authorize signage to sort of help the businesses advertise themselves. And so it it it's, as Eva had mentioned, she's absolutely correct, that we do have a provision in place that does allow for temporary signage for grand openings. That signage is limited to window signage. It was not permitted our banner signs at all, but because of the COVID situation and the urgency ordinance adopted by council, it does give the ability of of these banners that you see out there throughout the city.
Okay, I just, I it came to my mind, because when I was out looking at the the property for this case, I mean, I noticed the San Marino Security across the Boulevard has had a sign out there for, well, since they finished building the building. Go cakes has a sign up, encore music has a sign up. So I was just kind of curious how long, but it sounds like until the pandemic thing is resolved, those will be permitted. Okay, are there any other questions for staff? Yes.
Yeah, I I had one more question that I just thought of. And do we have any restrictions to, in regards to like, I'm gonna say the density of illuminated illuminated signs? Every single building allowed to have a, like, can we literally have Huntington Drive, like, with every building having an illuminated sign? Or do we have restrictions with regards to the density of that?
Currently, the municipal code is silence on the concentration of illuminated signage.
Okay, thank you.
I I had one other question, and that is the intensity of that lighting that the the vendor, the contractor put up. Do you know if that lighting could be reduced on that sign fixture?
Why don't we wait again, as with coming Vice Chair Boyle's question, we'll wait till the applicant presents.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for city staff?
Yeah, if I may, just really fairly quickly, we had, you know, dating back about, you know, 10, 15 years ago, we were having a very similar concerns regarding the illumination of signage in our commercial areas. And there was a concerted effort way back to look at commercial signage from the aspect of the actual method in which the 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 letters are being illuminated. And as a result of sort of those efforts to sort of reduce the the impacts of lighting glare, the DRC for many years was approving illuminated signs in the halo effect type of sign. And so good examples of that would be the UPS store, Starbucks, where the actual channel letter isn't lit, but backlit. And so you see sort of the reflection of the letters off the surface of the back of the of the surface of the building, rather than the individual channel letter itself having it lit directly through the the paneling. And so I think Commissioner Brody, I think you remember some of that way back. And then we made those those attempts through conditions of approval, through continuances to come back with those types of of signs where they are what they call in the terminology halo or backlit signage. And so it helped diffuse some of the lighting glare issues.
Thank you. That's helpful. If there are no more questions for staff, I'm going to ask the applicant to present. If the applicant or the applicant's representative could go ahead and present the information you feel would be helpful for us, we'd appreciate that.
I guess I can speak first. My name is Steve Troy. My wife, Jessica Troy, and I are the owners of the building, the owners of the RTR Investment LLC. I think I was presenting with you guys on January 2019 for our conditional use permit, and we've kind of reached the point where the business is open and operational at this time. We do want to say that we're very grateful to have this opportunity ever since we acquired the building. The building has been fully restored per the Design Review Commission. We've made significant improvements to the building, including a full fire suppression system, and it's structurally as well. And ever since our ownership, whereas before it was an older rundown building with smaller businesses, now our building occupies two very successful women-owned business, and we're very proud of that. We are owner, user, operator. We're a family-owned business. We are not really going anywhere. We live two miles away from our business, and we would just like to have the opportunity to have a fitting sign for our building. And to answer Commissioner Boyle's question, I believe there is a pediatric dentist across the street from Trader Joe's on Huntington Boulevard. However, that that particular pediatric dentist is not in the city of San Marino. My wife is coming down. She's just putting our two-year-old to bed right now, but my wife is a board-certified pediatric dentist. She's the only board-certified pediatric dentist in city of San Marino. So we're very proud of that fact as well. There is another dental office, I believe, operating under the name of San Marino Dentistry. However, that gentleman, that doctor is a general dentist, and is not a board-certified specialist like my wife is. So I hope that clarifies that aspect of the question as well.
Thank you.
Eric, I don't know if you have something to say regarding the signage?
Uh, yeah, good evening, everybody. So my name is Eric Russell. I'm actually the general manager of the company that's building the signs for Dr. Troy on their business. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for considering our proposal tonight. After sitting here through this portion of the meeting so far, it's super evident that you guys really care deeply about what makes the city of San Marino beautiful. Thank you for all your hard work. I've served on boards before, and I appreciate everything you guys do. As you know, we're proposing two building signs for Dr. Troy, who is investing in completing an opening and new business in the retail area of the 2,000 block of Huntington Drive. This would, as you know, include one illuminated sign at the front street side and one non-illuminated sign at the rear of the property. As we mentioned earlier, in recent past, staff was able to approve such signs as this. And in fact, as you can see in the findings, there are several similar signs in the media area. The signs we are proposing are not only consistent with city codes, but are also manufactured no differently than any other signs in the media area, to including a a sign that's just a few doors down from this location. I know that there's been issues or you know, issues taken with the illumination. We've been discussing that tonight. But I want to assure you that the colors and materials and LEDs are not only consistent with the building structure and the cityscape, but also the existing lighting in the area. To answer Mr. Savant's question, he mentioned using a halo sign. So in this case, we did not propose a halo sign. We actually proposed a frontlit channel sign, which is similar to every single other sign on the block. So we're not proposing anything different. The HSBC sign is actually a dualit sign, which means it lights up on the front and the back. And so is Sky Vision and a couple others on that block. There's a Gejorian rug sign that's actually a neon sign. That one would be about 20% brighter than the sign we're proposing. To kind of get a little into the details, a lot of companies use a 0.72 watt LED, which is a pretty bright LED. The sign that we had proposed is actually proposes a 0.48 watt LED, which is the same thing we use in malls across the nation to limit the illumination, but still provide a good look for the business. So, you know, we feel strongly that the this sign is not only consistent with this with escape and general field, the area and the question, but it also is going to provide a real positive look for Dr. Troy and her new practice and still be consistent with the aesthetics and beautification of San Marino. So that's a, that's all I really have to add, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki, since you had a question for the, I'll let you go first.
Yeah, the.
Yes, sir.
The question I have is, uh, having gone through design review and the issues that they brought up in denying your request, and now you're appealing it, have you addressed some of their concerns? Not asking specifically what they were, but do you think you've addressed some of those concerns that they had?
Sure. Um, one of the things we did was, like I said, lowered the LEDs to a different wattage. You mentioned, can you turn them down?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, so if you if you guys have LEDs in your house, you probably know that most LEDs are not dimmable. They come on at a at a regular brightness, and you can't really change that. But we can change the type of LEDs we install in the sign to kind of limit those. The previous committee, as far as I understand it, took issue again with illumination. They had suggested doing a non-illuminated sign in both the front and the back, and only in white in color, which, again, this is a pediatric dentistry. We thought that the color would really add to that. And and given that there are several other colored signs on that same block, both on the south and north side, you know, we felt it would be consistent with the area, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Oh, all right. Well, I have a few that I'm gonna ask. So on the proposed sign, I see three colors. The Olympic blue, the Kumon blue, and the golden yellow. It's clear to me that the SAN is Olympic blue. And the, but what I, what's not clear to me is the the pediatric dentistry part. What color blue is that? Is that the Olympic blue or the Kumon blue?
If you take a look for one second, I can, let me, let's go look. So the SAN in San Marino is the Olympic blue. The, obviously, the M in the liner are the golden yellow, and the A, R, I, N, and O are the Kumon blue, which is just a slightly different shade than the other blue.
Right. But what about the pediatric dentistry across the box?
The pediatric dentistry, so that one, that one is going to be painted to match the Kumon blue. Those are not illuminated. That is a a, just a, what we call an FCO. It's a flat cutout letter that's applied to the wall.
All right. And then in the materials that you presented in the packet, it states that the, or, well, let me just make sure I understand this correctly. So the acrylic material on the larger lettering is translucent white. And then that color is achieved by a vinyl overlay, like a vinyl film that goes across that. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And then the pediatric dentistry, the smaller letters you're talking about that are not illuminated, that's just a PVC material that's cut out and mounted on posts.
That is, that is correct, and then painted to match the vinyl.
I see. And then the temporary sign that's hanging there right now, did you make that for the applicant?
We did fabricate that and send it to them directly, but we did not install it.
Did you, did you make that to the same dimensions and scale of the sign that's being proposed?
I don't know. I think, I don't believe so. I believe the banner that's there was a little bit smaller than what the sign was proposed at, but I don't have that packet in front of me, so I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. And then.
It's very similar, if, Mr. Dustin, it is similar in size, but I don't know the exact size.
You mentioned that you're using 0.04 watt LED emitters. I looked at the, you know, in the, for example, the example that you submitted showed that there are, I think, about 13 of those LEDs in the A character. So I'm just multiplying that out. Does that mean that that let that individual character A is gonna have about 6.24 watts?
That is correct.
Okay, so about six to seven watts per letter?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then last question would be, I guess, for the applicant. Would you be willing to reduce the overall size of the sign? I'm talking about the the front sign facing Huntington Drive.
I believe the, to address that question, the banner, in my opinion, the the overall size of the banner is significantly larger, and even the lettering, I believe, is larger than what the space allows. The, if you look at the front wall, there's actually a, I don't recall the exact dimension, but the, there is a kind of a wooden frame that goes around the stucco wall, and the actual mention for the signage is not that big. And if I recall correctly, the actual signage, the lettering should be smaller than what's on the the banner itself. So, you know, the 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 signage design that we came up with, we feel is proportional to the 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 open stucco wall that's available. I think anything smaller might, we feel that actually might look, um, off balance. We certainly don't want a sign that's overbearing and too large, that's not our intent. The signage was created very rapidly because we had to do construction and open the business during the lockdown and during COVID. So I don't believe the size of the banner represents what the, actually what the final signage would be.
And, and actually, Mr. Dustin, I can concur with that. While Mr. Troy was speaking, I was looking up the records, I was logging in my office. The vinyl banner that we put there was a five foot tall by eight foot wide banner, which is larger than the sign we're proposing by at least a foot in each direction.
That's correct.
But you're, that's the size of the banner itself, not when you measure the, the sign, you're only measuring the, a box created around
I see what you're saying.
Characters.
Yeah.
It's, I measured that banner with, or I'm sorry, my best guess at the, the size of the of the banner was 7'9", so I guess I got it pretty close if you say it's eight feet.
Pretty close, yeah.
But I'm imagining you probably take off about five inches on either side of that to just eliminate the white space. Okay, so it's close anyways.
It's, it's fairly close, I believe it is a little larger and I believe we did put a rendition on page two of our
Yeah, I saw that.
That is actually representative of the actual size of the sign.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, any questions from the other commissioners before I open it up to the public? Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment for, against or about this project? If that is the case, would you please indicate by using the raise hand feature and let staff know? I don't see anybody, do you, Marlon?
I don't see anyone either, no.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing portion and we will go to deliberations amongst the committee. Who's up on my list here? Oh, Chairman Okazaki, or Commissioner Okazaki. I'm making everybody the chair tonight.
But personally, I, I think every business should be able to have lights. And if this tastefully done and, and consistent with other lights in the area, even though the other others may have sort of grandfather or grandmother in, I think it's appropriate for us to allow them to install outside lighting.
Thank you. Okay. Vice Chair Boil.
So I am really curious to hear what the other commissioners have to say, and thank you Commissioner Okazaki for your input. I don't really have a problem with the illumination of the sign. You know, this is hard for me because my entire career is branding and branding, I don't know what to say, you know, branding and design and and, and so it's, so the reason that this is hard for me is just because so I want to say to the, to the choice, the, the redesign of this building, in my opinion, is really beautiful, I am a fan of Go Cakes, I go there weekly. I have watched the development happen and I think that the exterior is really, has become very lovely. To me, the building speaks of more mid-century modern kind of feel, that that seems to be the direction going. And I think that that is counter to the design of the logo, you know, in terms of the font and the coloring. And I, I feel as though we have to look at this in terms of the inconsistency within the design of the building, as well as it should be consistent within the building, meaning, you know, I don't know what Go Cakes is going to do because they do currently, as Chair Dustin commented, they just have a banner. Their logo does seem to be more consistent with the mid-century modern kind of look that the building is going for and the and the San Marino Pediatric Dentistry, it, 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 I get that it needs to be, for lack of better words, childlike, because it's obviously a pediatric dentist office, but at the same time, I think that's very inconsistent within the building and so I'm very, I'm very torn about it and that's why I'd really like to hear what other, you know, if any of the other commissioners have what their thoughts are.
Well, we can, we can come back after everybody's thoughts, it's only the four of us because the other two would do so. Commissioner Wright, why don't you share your thoughts?
Well, I feel very frustrated by this application slash appeal because I feel we're very limited in our guidelines, we're limited in our standards. It's extremely vague, I mean, I know we do something like this when we talk about compatibility when we're looking at buildings, but I feel like we have, our design guidelines are, give us a lot more to go on. This is simply compatibility with the architecture of the building and with the architecture and aesthetics of the adjacent area. That, that's really broad. And so I feel frustrated and I have respect for our design review committee who said no to it. I'm mindful that that's their business and they didn't like it. I, I just, I drive down there, I drove down there, of course, to look at this. And just as Vice Chair Boyle has her own, can I use, I don't want to say bias necessarily, but interest in branding, I have way more, way more knowledge and experience with signs than I ever want to. Having, having been involved in the city of Los Angeles. I mean, it's awful. And, but, but what I have learned is that objective standards help. And you can really, you can, you can really help people and you can help the city when you have really the objective standards. We don't have that here and I just worry so much when I go up and down the street, are we going to become why the city of LA ended up in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals on a First Amendment case? Because of, because we had to have a reaction to all of the signs that were coming up in the city of LA. Huge and unregulated and just a mess. And I know our little city is not probably gonna have that happen. But the, a lot of signs, I'm not a fan, I'm not a fan of a lot of signs, just in general. I just think it's not good aesthetics. And I'm not a huge fan of illuminated signs, because why? This is a pediatric dentistry, I'm hoping their patients aren't out looking for the place when it's lit. So it's clearly, you know, it's clearly advertising, I get it. But I just I always said, I wish we had more, more guidelines, I'm I'm very torn, I would be, if we were going to do illumination, I prefer the, the more backlit, the more UPS type. I want to be sure it's proportional, I, not even wild about the bright colors, I'm sorry, I'm not helpful. I felt, I'm kind of rambling a little bit because I do feel frustrated, but, so those are my comments.
All right. Well, I'm gonna add my comments, I'm not sure if they're gonna help anybody anyway. But so I, I do think there is call for an illuminated sign for this business. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, yes, it is kids, but, you know, I'm thinking when you go into the winter months, when it gets dark early and you have, I mean, it's been a long time since I've been to see Dr. Snare as a pediatrician or pediatric dentist, but I don't remember going out, getting, taken out of school to go see him, I think we had to go after school and so I can imagine that there would be call for there to be illumination of some degree, at least during business hours in the winter months when it's dark. Certainly not in the rear, and they're not proposing that in the rear because we have residential units there across the alley. I do have some concerns, I've been in that area in the daytime, I went and looked at it at night twice. It was very, very dark. Not very inviting. And then I noticed it's because none of the streetlights were on on that block, so I reported that to the city and hopefully that will have been fixed by now. But I just like I think Commissioner Wright said, I'm not a fan of illuminated garish signs as advertisement vehicles. If it's for the purpose of notifying your customers where you are so that they can find your business, that's one thing. But I don't think we need to, you know, I think we've gone down a bad road. Especially in Huntington. And again, some of those signs, it's because they were grandfathered. The Gejorian carpet sign, I mean, of course, that's been there since I was a kid, I remember that sign. So it's been there forever. Some of the other signs, you know, we did have a, a law that recently sunsetted that allowed signage to be approved over the counter by staff. And although I have the greatest respect for staff, I think a lot of stuff is up there now that was not approved by a review body, but was approved by staff. And it's probably a little more garish and bright than, at least more than I'm comfortable with. Some of the examples in the applicant's packet, you know, the Sky Vision sign, some of these double lit signs, that, they're just not appropriate in my mind. I am very comfortable with the level of illumination on Starbucks and UPS. The other concern I have is with the, the sort of artificial plastic shiny nature of some of these materials. I don't know if it's a, if it's achievable to create sort of a matte finish rather than a gloss finish on these, you know, on that vinyl film that they put across the, the acrylic or if the PVC can be achieved with a matte finish, but I would prefer that over a shiny plastic. I don't, I, I also think that both the front facing sign and the rear facing sign should be centered over the newly relocated doorways, not centered over the building space like they are in the applicant's materials, I think it looks better. And again, to Vice Chair Boyle's comments, we don't know what Go Cakes is going to do in the future. And I think if you center the pediatric dentistry sign, it's going to be too close to anything that Go Cakes might present, propose. So I, I think centering the signs over the doors would be preferable. The reason I asked the applicant whether they'd be willing to reduce the size of the sign is because exactly that, there's that framed parapet on that wall facing the, the boulevard. And I need, I think the sign needs to clearly fit within that framing. It, it cannot go outside and it needs to even have a little distance, top and bottom, I think, to, to allow it to be centered and not look crowded. I agree with Vice Chair Boyle, I, I'm not a fan of the font that's been chosen, it's not a particularly legible font. So I'm not a fan of things that are not legible because that is the purpose of signage. But also, it is less compatible than the more clean look of the Go Cakes with that mid-century style building. However, to Commissioner Wright's point, I'm, I'm sort of reluctant to dictate branding. And when you start telling people what font they can use, now it's like, well, what logo can you use? And if you have, if you're trying to create a brand, I mean, do you have a right to create that, that personality for your brand? I, I think one of the issues that I have is with the illuminated signage being on all the time. And I noticed the Gejorian rug sign is not on all night long. If you go by there at seven o'clock, it's on. But if you go by there at one o'clock in the morning, and don't ask me why I was out on the boulevard at one, it is not on. So I think there are ways to put these timers, not just on a photoelectric cell so that it comes on when it gets dark, but also put it on a timer so that it's only on maybe during the business hours in the dark. And then it can shut off or, you know, dim way down. Because, well, I guess these are not dimmable, these LEDs. Because again, I don't know that we're in the, you know, this is a primarily residential community and I, I don't know that we are in the business of providing that kind of aggressive advertising. So those are my thoughts, I don't know if that helped anybody.
That did help, so you're, you're talking about conditions that would require a matte finish, maybe the backlit, hours of operation of the sign and then certain location on the building.
Yeah.
Those are the four I got, did I miss anything?
Well, just making sure that whatever size the sign is, it's within that parapet wall. And actually, I'm sorry, Marlon, is it possible for me to share my screen real quick?
Let me see if I can give you that capability, I think you should already be able to.
Oh, yeah, it looks like I am. So I took a picture of the building with the banner up and I just did some crude cut and paste and moved the lettering down till it fit on the, so this is the size and scale of the lettering on the banner as it exists. And that's what I, you know, I sort of just moved it down and got rid of as much of the white as I could, so you'd get an idea of the size. But I just thought that looked better than centering it over the facade too. Anyway, I'm gonna stop sharing now, but that was sort of what I had in mind. Does anybody have a motion? Or would you like to discuss it more?
If it's okay, may I add?
I'll just give you just a minute or two to, if you have a comment, but I don't want to get into a back and forth discussion.
No, I don't plan to. Yeah, the original parapet was designed so that the signage would be contained within the borders of that parapet, it will not be going past that frame. The, the original intent when this was designed by Dole Architects was that the, because our dental office occupies two combined units, that the signage will be centered inside within the parapet of one business and centered within another. If we do it over the doorway, it would be slightly off center. But it still should be within the center of each business and there should be adequate spacing, I believe, between the two businesses.
All right, thank you. Does anyone want to propose a motion or does anybody have a further discussion?
Do you mind if I throw one more thing at you? I'll, I'll keep it very, very short, Mr. Dustin, I know you've already spoken a lot. I just wanted to kind of speak to some of your points. The timer issue, we do, there is a timer via California electric, electrical code. We do have to add a timer to the sign, so it's not going to be on all night long. It, it will be controlled both by a photo cell and a timer when it comes on, when it gets dark and it can turn off at 11 or 12 PM and not be on all night long, so that will be there. The vinyl that we use, the reason we're using a vinyl color over the acrylic versus using a colored acrylic is because colored acrylic has a glossy finish and the vinyl has a matte finish, so it's not as glossy as you had indicated. And I just wanted to throw out those two things for your consideration as well.
Thank you.
And, and the clarification, then, the, the lower wattage on the, the sign was something that was not offered to the design review? Is there something new that you're presenting?
James, I don't want to, James, let me just explain, I don't, I don't want to get back and forth with the applicant on this issue. The reason that there was no negotiation with the DRC is because the applicant was not present at either of the meetings.
Got it.
The, the DRC had a lot of questions about what they would be willing to accommodate in a sense of a change, but that was not possible. So all right.
Dustin, would you, would you want to propose, when they said they have the capability of time, a particular hour that it should end? Or leave it to them 11 or midnight?
I don't know, what do you guys think? I'm I, I was thinking more along the lines of like 10 o'clock.
War opens that.
Does, does staff know about any other lights if they, if there's a particular time other lights are turned off? If you know.
Unfortunately, we don't have, we don't keep track of that.
And I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say up in a condition that people turn off the lights at a particular time. See, that surprised me.
Well, I would immediately say, okay, what if they don't turn off at 10? I mean, like, we don't have, I would argue that we don't have enforceability.
Right, I was just thinking that myself.
You know, and why do they have to turn their lights off if somebody, somebody else doesn't? And, and it, it just makes it really sticky, even though it would be a preference. Back to the fact that we don't really have guidelines for our signage.
I agree.
Well, the only thing that I would want to do in a motion, if I got Well, the only thing that I would want to do in a motion, if I got consensus, would be the backlit. I would much prefer that type of, of illumination.
I am agreeable to that motion. Why don't we, why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
Vice Chair, are you all right with that? You prefer the.
The what?
The brighter.
Oh, no, definitely not the brighter. I mean, I'm fine with the backlit. I'm, yeah.
All right. Well, then I could move to, um.
I mean, oh, sorry. I also do agree that it just does look better over the door than the center of the building. And I don't know how to make that condition either. The way that, uh, Chair Dustin had it.
I think we just simply say the door, the, the, both the front and the rear signage should be centered over the entrance door below them.
So, okay, Jerry, you go ahead and make that motion.
Yeah, let me try and do that. Okay. Well, I was going to say the motion would be to grant the appeal. In overturn the design review committee's denial, approve design review number DRC 20 dash 21. With the, um, condition that it needs to be backlit and that the location should be over the door. Anything else?
Just whatever standard conditions the staff have in their.
And include the standard conditions of the, of staff.
Yes.
That's my.
Okay, I can second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Uh, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner, uh, oh.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Boyle?
I don't know. I was, I was saying, yes, it is Commissioner Okazaki, but I wasn't.
I don't think.
I cannot vote.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, you can.
I was told at previous meetings that's, uh. Cause I tried to do that before when the other board members recused themselves, but I was told that. That the planning commission does not allow that. So I'm recusing myself. I can't, I cannot vote because you got five members who's two recuse themselves, but I cannot vote.
You're right. We have a quorum. We have a quorum. There's the three of us.
Oh, I'm not aware of that. Okay.
Do we start again?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, that was wild.
Wait a second, because we have a quorum of whatever non commissioners, then, then.
I'm not a voting member today. I'm not a voting member today.
So only if it's known going in that they're absent commissioners at that. You, okay.
That's what I was told in previous meetings.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you for the clarification. I didn't know.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that either.
Yeah, well, I wish you could change the rule.
All right, then let's move on.
Motion to change the rule.
Uh, if we could bring back Commissioners Chang and Brody. I see they're back. Good. Uh, let's move on to agenda item number six. This is conditional use permit CUP 20 dash 04. Design review DRC 20 dash 62 at 2950 Wallingford Road. Uh, if we could have the staff report, please.
Thank you. Um, this, for this application, the applicant is requesting to, um. To do a single story addition to an existing single story house. The reason for the CUP is that the addition will cost the property to exceed the maximum allowed block coverage for the property. Um, however, the maximum allowed livable area, the project is still under that number. Um, the addition will extend the size of the structure by greater than 25% of its current length. And that is the reason why for the DRC action. The total addition that we are looking at is 498 square feet and this addition will create a new master suite. Um, along the west side yard. The program also includes converting an existing bedroom into an office. Um, by removing a shower stall in the bathroom next to it. So at the end, this home will have four bedrooms, three bathroom and a powder room. In terms of the conditional use permit findings, staff is able to make all of the finding for this addition project. The addition is in the back of the home, not visible from the street. And the addition will not provide new window opening that may cause privacy concern on the adjacent neighbors. In terms of setbacks, the project complies with all required setbacks. The project will leave enough open space on the property similar to other, um, adjacent structure. Staff is able to make the finding for CUP. And also this project being in the back of the home will allow the home to maintain its current visual massing. Building height and its current ranch structure, the style of the structure. Um, and would not alter the existing street scape. And staff is, um, recommending approval of this, um, request. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Well, in that case, I will ask, uh, the applicant or the applicant's representative to please make their presentation.
Hi, uh, my name is German Cortez. I'm the applicant for 2950 Wallingford Road. Uh. Yes, so we're supposed to do the single story addition of 498 square feet. Convert the existing rear bedroom into an office. To meet the party requirement to use, keep the existing two car garage. Yes, so the property owner just wants to create a master bedroom. Uh, a larger bedroom because the existing bedroom that's being converted to an office. Uh, it's, it's a really small bedroom. So that's the reason why we're adding the master bedroom to have a walk-in closet and a, a bathroom. Now, as far as, uh, lock coverage, uh. The adjacent neighbors are able to build the size of addition that we are proposing. So. That's why we want to go ahead and try to get this, uh, proposed addition approved.
And does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Thank you. I think, I think I'm correct about this, that I read where you're, um, going to, uh, remove a tree related to this project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Where is the tree? I, I was looking at your project and trying to figure out the tree.
Well, it's on the, on the demolition plan, but it's behind the existing bedroom on the rear.
The existing bedroom that's, uh.
To the right.
Turned into an office, but on the other side where the master bedroom, that would make sense. Where the master bedroom is going to be expanded, so you need to remove it because of the expansion that goes to the, um, lock coverage, right?
Yes. That is correct.
Thank you. What kind of tree is it?
It's a lilac tree.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions from any of the other commissioners? I had two questions, but Jerry already asked one of them, so I'm going to ask my last question. Uh, will you be installing any exterior lighting?
The existing house has a, two sliding doors going towards, from the dining room towards the back. And that's going to be turned into one big sliding door, but we are not adding on the, uh. On the master bedroom or addition, we're not going to be adding no exterior lights.
Okay. I'll open this for public comment now. Um, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak for, against, or about this project? I don't, oh, I see one hand.
Jennifer.
I myself. Hi, I'm Jennifer Giles, 2290 the Red Road. I just had two points I wanted to make. Um, I just would like to advise you to be very leery. That the applicant has modified a potential fifth bedroom and bathroom, adjacent bathroom. Um, in order to escape the need to create a three car garage for a five bedroom home. Also, um, 450 square feet for an addition when they're only allowed an additional 250 square feet of ground coverage. I think 250 square feet is plenty to create an appropriate master bedroom suite. 450 is quite enlarged and if you look at the plan, it is very generous. And I don't see why, um, the applicant would need to, um. Work beyond their means or allowability for their site. Um, just because they want to have everything all on one ground floor and level. So I would caution you to approve this and hope that you might consider having the designer. Uh, modify the design in order to fit within the parameters of the availability of the lot. Thank you.
And do we have anyone else, uh, from the public who wishes to make a comment about this project?
Not at this time, Chair.
All right, with that then, um, I'll close the public, uh, comment portion of the hearing and we'll. Go to, uh, Commissioner Deliberations. Commissioner Chang?
Yes, thanks, Chairman Dustin. Now, I, you know, I think the. The addition and renovation is, is relatively modest in the sense that it, it does give the homeowner the ability to use, utilize a property. Um, as, as they would see fit. I, what does concern me is that the, the, a neighbor to the, with the West. Did not, there was no response, uh, with, with approval or, or objection. Uh, I know the neighbor to the east did give approval. Uh, I think the neighbor to the west is more highly impacted by the extension, uh, on that, on this, uh, home. Uh, that would, you know, affect the, the privacy and/or, uh, the, the view from, from the neighbor's yard. Which is just one thing that does concern me. You know, with the comments we heard, uh, you know, I, I think. Given the, the size and, and overall, uh, usability of the home and compatibility, I think it, it's, it's a, a fair project and I'd be able to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Well, I think Chair Dustin, you and Vice Chair Boyle will know exactly what I'm going to say because you've heard my ranting before. Uh, but let, let's just say I agree with Ms. Giles, so she stole my thunder. You know, I just really do not like these bedrooms that presto change-o do not become bedrooms anymore. This one, I have to admire them because they were upfront about it. You know, it was a bedroom. We, we made it not a bedroom by taking out a shower and, and you know, shame on the city. I mean, that, that we allow that to happen. That's my rant, because I think we need to change our laws and how we deal with. You know, two, two car garages and three car garages. It's, it's not working. Because of, it's just easy. It's just easy to say it's a library. It's an office. It's, it's, it's just, it's, it's too easy. And this is too easy for me. I, I don't see the need to exceed our code. That is not a right. It is a privilege. Our codes are, are codes for a reason and we, and we have them for a reason. And I don't see the need to exceed our codes to get a really nice master suite. You can make the really nice master suite, extend that current bedroom that you're making an office and make a really nice master suite that way. And you still have your four bedrooms or leave it as that little bedroom and just extend the third bedroom on the right. I mean, I know we're not supposed to design and I'm terrible at it anyway. My point is it can be done. And so, ah, I'm a no.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Brody?
I tend to agree with Commissioner, uh, Wright, even though I don't necessarily share that philosophy entirely. Uh, I do believe that in this case, this particular case, there was no need to go an extra two, 250. Uh, I mean, it's just. It, it doesn't make any sense to me. And, and so I would be a no as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair Boyle?
Um, as drawn, I would be a no. Um, and for the similar reasons that have been brought up, uh, for me particularly, I think that we are. Really calling that bathroom to powder room change, just, I mean. It, they didn't even, they just took out the shower, but they haven't filled the space with anything, which just tells me that. At least according to what I see in the plans, that they are just leaving the, I don't know what they're planning there, but they just removed the shower and now all of a sudden. They don't have to have, uh, they don't have to meet the requirements with regards to the garage space. Um, that is really concerning for me. I can just see in the future that that can easily be converted back into a full bathroom. Without, you know, the, the garage being to code. Similarly to, um, to Commissioner Wright, I just don't see why there's the need for maximum block coverage. That extra 250 square feet is just, I mean, they could have. They could have drawn it in, in a different way. And so as I said, as drawn, I'm a no. Would I support a continuance if they were to come back and rework everything? I could probably do that, but as it stands, I would, I, I can't approve this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, in, uh, in concert with, uh, Commissioner Wright. I, I wish that they would try to stay within the. Within the current, current guidelines and not have to go 250 feet more than they need to. I think they could redesign it.
Thank you.
I would support continuance too, yeah.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I have, um. Similar feelings to what seems to be the concurrence of opinion. I just. You know, I don't really like to go down that road of trying to predict what somebody may or may not do with a space in the future. But clearly what is evident to me is that there are numerous opportunities for a solution here that don't require. This excess to go over the, the, the lot coverage that is allowed to them. I, I, so I don't, I don't see that. I'm also concerned about the removal of the tree. I know that this will kick off, you know, the tree permit process and require them to come up with a landscaping plan. But I just, I think some sort of a condition if they are going to get rid of that tree. Needs to be in there to, that a tree is going to be replaced because there's going to be an awful lot of hardscaping on this property after this and, and. No trees in the back. Um, so I'm concerned about that. And also, you know, their change of the patio, uh, their installation of the patio door. Their chosen style of door, again, does not fit the traditional architectural style of this home. Uh, they're very contemporary looking, uh, single pane, uh, glass doors. Um, a divided light is what you would see on a ranch home of this type. So that is not consistent. Uh, but primarily I just, I, I can't see the justification for it to exceed. The lot coverage, given that there are so many opportunities for a solution that, that wouldn't require it. So. Do we, do we have a motion?
I'll move to deny conditional use permit number CUP 20 dash 04 and design review number DRC 20 dash 62.
Yeah, I'll second you.
Can we have a roll call?
Sure. Uh, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, let's move on to agenda item, um, seven. This is conditional use permits. Um, I'm not going to read off all the numbers, but let's just say. Conditional use permits and design review considerations for 1161 Virginia Road. Uh, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, the conditional use permit involve addition of the first and second floor. Also addition to an existing basement. The addition in the basement will make the basement level larger than 60% of the footprint of the home and that requires a conditional use permit. Um, there is an existing detached three car garage on the property. And the applicant is proposing to add a new, um, basement level to that garage. Uh, which will make the garage larger than 720 square feet, um, of footprint. which will make the garage larger than 720 square feet of footprint in total lot coverage. And that also requires a conditional use permit as well. These changes, the addition and to the second floor, require design review actions. As stated in the staff report, the property currently is a little over 14,000 square, 14,000, the maximum allowed square footage on this property is 14,041 feet. The proposed addition of total livable area will make this property 13,917 square feet. The property will remain below the maximum lot coverage. However, staff is unable to make the finding for both conditional use permit because the idea of allowing a basement to exceed the required 60% of the lot coverage of the footprint of the building above it, without looking at other alternative to provide the additional livable area on the property, would trigger subsequent application to come in to the city and request for the same consideration. And in fact, we know that this is one of the larger property in the city. If the city is to give similar consideration to another property that may be smaller and to exceed, allow 60% footprint in the basement, that will trigger a potential detrimental effect to development in the city going forward. And as for the addition of, and additionally, this new basement will essentially create a 600-square-foot-plus garden terrace, as stated on the plans, essentially as a roof deck on, on the first floor of the property. A deck of that size could potentially cause privacy concern to adjacent neighbors, especially the west neighbors are about 20 feet lower than this property. The same, staff shares the same concern with a proposed balcony on the detached garage. The detached garage has a three-car garage, a workshop next to it, and below it with the new basement level for storage. But this above the storage level, the applicant is proposing to use the roof of this new basement level to introduce a new balcony. This creates, again, a privacy concern because this garage is only five feet away from the west neighbors. And staff feels that a balcony on a garage structure is an inappropriate and not at all a complimentary use to a, an accessory structure. So staff is unable to support that request. So being that staff is unable to make the finding for the conditional use permit, staff is recommending that the committee, if you so inclined, to continue the project, allowing the applicants to reconsider the scale of this project and to come back with a redesign. And also, I would like to clarify, that would be my staff report. I did mention that the project, the addition to the garage, will require the removal of a oak tree, which is identified as tree number two on the Arbus report. The applicant has subsequently provided information to me today that that tree has already been removed because of a windstorm that, that occurred earlier in the year. And that removal was done with a, with a permit from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? I have one question. So you mentioned that one of the conditional use permits is because the basement that they're proposing would exceed the 60% limitation of the structure's footprint.
Correct.
The basement ordinance, am I recalling correctly, doesn't it also prohibit basements outside the footprint of the first-floor structure?
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, with that, I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to make their presentation, please.
Hi, good evening. Chairman Dustin and the member of the committee. My name's Alex Chang, the designer of the project. First, I would like to start off to share some of the project photos of the site. And knowing that during the COVID-19, they may not have, everyone may not be able to see the backyard of the entire site, so let me start off with that. How do I get to the first page? Have issue. Get to the photos.
What, just as a suggestion, maybe you could just narrate what the point is, because we've all seen it.
Okay. So basically, the project consists of three parts. The first part is on the main house where the, the salari and the skylight, when you walk from the front yard, look into the project, that skylight is sticking out, which is not really a part of the original architecture, and it's an energy insufficient. And what we look at is to modify this area to make a circular form, which we can find out the original design of the architecture used similar form to come up with a design. So our idea is similar to that. And I think by create a form of the wall, and that really soften the edge of this location. And the, the French doors are pretty in the horizontal line with the existing building front elevations. This is part one. Part two is that the, in the back, where there's a covered porch with the arches, and we feel that this part, excuse me, back up a little bit. This part is already being altered from the original architecture. So my client would like to convert this area to become a mudroom, enclose the porch area. The second part also involved the basement addition. We look at several schemes. We felt this one's more suitable to the building, especially the 1917 architecture. Given an example, if we add an addition on the surface of the first and second floor, that will really change the originality of the style and the original structure, and also will create more massing on the surface. So by doing underground, this will also improve the, what's out there is now asphalt area for parking. So from the asphalt, you're going to see a roof garden instead. And the height of this roof, it's exactly the same high as the asphalt parking area, which the area is nicest, is not the nicest part on the project. So we felt that this is a reasonable approach. And this is also part of the reason that if the basement at all of the building, it requires a CUP. That's why we're here. And after the addition, what's going to be exposed is only one story, 10 feet or high. In this area, it's blending on the slope, and it's blending with the landscape surrounded. So looking from the neighbor, all the neighbors outside of 100 feet with a large edges around the site, you are no longer to see this addition. Third part to the project was the garage. Behind the garage, garage is always all the way to the back. And my client would like to have a little bit more area, which is a single-story addition to the back. And this area will storage their Christmas decoration and somehow whatever that they need from the home. So we look at, if we would have designed this out of the slope roof, which would be more compatible to the architecture, but what we are facing is that currently the house has a patina ceramic tiles on the architectural roof, which this is the material that no longer available. So, and also from the second floor, from the master, looking down to this area, roof form might not fit to the, the architecture of the style. So that my client requested, because if you see the drawing, currently, there has a large, large window looking out to the back already. That window is almost seven feet in height. So the visible area is almost the same. We're taking the same opening, just change from window to doors, and incorporate this balcony. The balcony, because it's an accessory structure, the usage of this is very minimal. And when the client approached the neighbor downstairs, they reviewed the design, and they have no objections. So, let's move with that. Some parts of the railing design on the project, we tried to incorporate the original design of the house. And as you can see from the color board, that we tried to keep the design very similar and not to be too ornate to the project. And I hope this expansion of the project you can consider for the two CUP that we asked for tonight. Okay. So that's all I have, Commissioners and Chairman.
Thank you very much. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I had a question.
Yes.
I saw in the tree report that there was a recommendation of removal of six trees. Is that correct?
That is quite correct. That is a different project of the ADU that we're trying to apply. And that has already granted approval to pull the permit.
So the tree were necessary to be removed in order for you to build the ADU?
No, the ADU was designed around those trees, and we had the Arbus look at each tree that we're, that they recommend approve to remove. So because there's an issue with the tree, and that's clearly staff stating.
So the recommended, that's what I wondered in looking at the report. So the recommendation for removal was based solely on the health of the trees?
Correct.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Okay. In that case, let's move to the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak for, against, or about this project?
I'd like to, if possible, Chair Dustin.
Yes, please.
I apologize, I'm trying to get my camera working here. Okay, there we go. I just wanted to ask why there is a need for the applicant to request such an overabundance of space beyond the limitations of our code? They have a huge lot to begin with. And why is there a need to protrude underground? Is there a reason to minimize the amount of square footage? In the basement spaces, these excessive terraces, I, I agree with what the city had stated. And I feel that the privacy of the neighbors to the west is definitely hindered by that. Just because you can build to the maximum does not necessarily mean that one should. And I just caution you on any sort of approval of these requests for this project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment about this project? Okay, then I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing, and let's move to Chairman Brody.
Yeah.
Everybody's going to be chair by the time this night's over. Everyone.
Brody. All right. They're sitting in a chair, you gotta be a chair. I agree entirely with the staff report, and I'm very troubled by this, this massive basement area, more than anything else. Normally, when we have something that needs to be tweaked, I'd, I'd agree with, with some of my compatriots here that maybe we move for a continuance, but this misses the vote so badly. I, I cannot see doing anything but denying this.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Yes, I, I agree. Anytime I see a project that comes before us, and it has not one, but two conditional use applications, I'm instantly on alert and, and concerned. That's, it, it's very unusual for a project to require, to require that to be something that we would, we would think was appropriate. And I don't think this is appropriate. I, I don't think it needs to exceed our codes just so they can have a home theater, a sauna, a powder room, a big rec area. That's, that's not the basis for conditional uses. My only question is to mirror what Commissioner Brody said. I'm unclear in the staff report recommendation what a continuance would do, because I know I'm opposing the CUPs, and if they need the CUPs for the, for their project, I don't see a basis to, to continue.
Thank you. Vice Chair Boyle?
I mean, I, can I make it really simple and just be like, God, I agree with what everyone has said so far? You know, I mean, I don't know what else to say. I think that, you know, this basement is massive. I think it sets a terrible precedent. I agree with Commissioner Wright that anything that requires two CUPs is one more than it should, maybe two more than it should. You know, so I'm, I was kind of on the fence of allowing a continuance after hearing Commissioner Brody and Commissioner Wright. I'm leaning more towards denying this outright.
Thank you. Commissioner Okazaki? I'm sorry. Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I agree with comments made. I believe what the applicant is trying to achieve is achievable and accomplishable within the bounds of the code and within the sizable property that exists. So I don't think it, I think it sets improper precedent to, to allow the two CUPs in this instance. I would be in support of a denial.
Thank you. And Commissioner Okazaki?
No comment.
Okay. Yeah, I will keep my comments also brief. I think everybody has spoken the thoughts that I have. I, I just, my two biggest problems are the, the massive subterranean excavation and the creation of these large outdoor terraces, especially in that neighborhood with the extreme variations in elevation. You are really opening up a potential privacy issue for the neighbors, at least on two sides of that property. And like everyone else has stated, given the extremely large size of the existing structure and the size of the lot, I don't understand why a solution could not have been found that didn't require the use of these conditional use permits. So I, I cannot see the justification for, for asking those. And like Commissioner, I think it was Christian, but Brody stated, I don't know what the value of a continuance would be. I, I don't see how you can accommodate that. So do we have a motion?
I move to deny conditional use permit number CUP 20-09 and CUP-20-09. I move to deny conditional use permit numbers CUP 20-09 and CUP-2015, design review numbers DRC 20-47 and DRC 20-50.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Or Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I apologize, I neglected or sort of flew by two agenda items that we do need to address. Agenda item number four, which is a design review, DRC 19-75 HP at 1831 Windsor Road. We have received a letter from the applicant withdrawing their application for the design review. So do I have a motion to receive and file that?
Yeah, I'll show move.
Second.
Do we need a roll call on that? If you do, yes. So Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then on to Agenda Item Number Five, conditional use permit, CUP 20-14, and design review, DRC 20-60 and DRC 20-61 at 1045 Rosalind Road. Staff, we received a memorandum on that from the applicant that they are, or I'm sorry, the staff sent a memo, the CUP is no longer required. Is that correct?
Correct. The design and the application is no longer within the planning commission's jurisdiction.
Okay, so do we have a motion to receive and file that?
Also move.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now we move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is an appeal of the determination of a tree removal permit for 747 Winston Road. And the property owner has submitted a withdrawal letter. Apparently, the two neighboring residents have come to a mutually agreeable solution. So do we need to take any action, or do we just?
Yeah, let's just make a motion to receive and file.
Okay.
So move.
Also, second.
And roll call?
Roll call, Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On to Agenda Item Number Nine, resolution of findings, conditional use permit, CUP 20-06 at 1045 Roanoke. I'm going to start with Commissioner Wright, since she's usually so thorough and.
You're going to be either proud or concerned that I have no comments on
Oh, my.
10 or 11. So it'll go a lot faster, people.
Does anybody else have any comments on that CUP resolution?
No.
I'll move to approve resolution of findings, conditional use permit number, CUP 20-06.
I'll second.
Roll call, Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And again, resolution of findings, conditional use permit, CUP 20-10 at 1448 Bradbury Road. Does anybody have any comments or recommended revisions to that resolution? I did not find any.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, Commissioner Brody? Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And last but not least, the meeting minutes for August 26, 2020. Did anybody find any required revisions to the minutes? I did not.
No.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheng? Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I believe that is all the business before us this evening. Is that not right?
Yes.
That is it. So I will say fairly briefly here that the City Council has remanded back to the planning commission 2275 Oak Knoll as well as 1215 St. Albans Road. And so you will see those projects come back to the planning commission either in November, if not the new year in January. And so we'll get those onto your agendas at those times.
How does that work, Director Santes? Do they remand it back with instructions?
Yeah, there was, without getting into too much detail, the City Council did remand one of them back with instructions, and that was the 2275 Oak Knoll. And the instructions of the applicant are to really do their due diligence in approaching the neighbors with this project and any revisions to share with the neighbors, that way they have a chance to really do a thorough commenting process. And so the direction was overall a very thorough public outreach program that I essentially feel confident that it was done appropriately. If I feel like it was not done appropriately, then they'll have to go back and do it all over again.
Just real quick, Director Suvantes, so the November meeting is not on our normal Wednesday. It's on a Tuesday, the 24th. Is that right?
Yeah, historically, we've always moved the meeting in November to the Tuesday because of the Thanksgiving holiday. And so we, unless the planning commission feels that it should be on the 25th, I think we've already advertised certain things for that meeting. So I think that it's pretty locked in.
Yeah, that's fine. And we do not meet in December?
We are dark in December, correct.
Okay, all right.
Although, was any special instructions or comments from the council on the St. Albans project?
On the St. Albans, similar in terms of, you know, basically starting all over again with the public outreach program, reaching out to neighbors and getting them to comment on the project.
Okay.
All right, I will adjourn the meeting then. Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.